Kind of a rough day up here.
What do you mean because of the weather?
Yeah, that's what I mean. How was, how was the trip up? Kind of a rough day up here. Hello, Elise.
Hello.
There we go. I don't have to read your lips. How's the ski operation going today?
Busy.
Busy, huh?
Yeah, it's just doesn't stop snowing these days.
No kidding?
Pretty sure the, I'm pretty sure the weather forecasters are a little banana inaccurate lately.
Uh, what do you mean lately?
Last three days.
About the 20 years I've been here. Jay, um, can you hear me? Jay, if you can hear me, unmute. Well, let's see, we have one more member of the committee to join us, namely John Byrne. Jen or Molly, do you have any indication that both Craig and John Byrne will be with us today?
I've not heard.
I haven't heard.
I think they'll be here.
I expect so too. Well, snowy day here in Alta. Elise, do you have any? Um, you probably get a general daily report on how much snow is falling and what the sill's depth is and so forth. What is it?
I don't know. I think on the website it said 31 inch storm, which is basically said Sunday morning, I think.
Yeah.
Forty-six somewhere.
Yeah, then 10 inches, 10 inches last night.
I keep blowing it away and it keeps coming back. Oh, there's, there's a guy. It looks like a refuge from the storm. Refugee from the storm. So at least we need at least two more joiners. John and Craig.
Molly, do you want to just resend them the instructions? I'm not assuming that's the reason, but just to cover our bases.
Just for fun.
Oh, there's John.
There's John.
All right.
John Goldner as well. Is he here?
I know. I think he is.
He told me he had a back appointment with his back surgeon and was not going to be here today.
Neurologist, right? Yeah.
Sorry I was late. I was a minute later.
Uh, well, you're not as late as, um.
It's gotta be a grace period, right?
Yeah, there has to be.
I was finishing reading the audit and filing my notes on the audit. Not to just jump ahead, but you know, I would say congratulations. It was a good job on the audit. And I'd say the audit was really positive and they raised no issues, I would say, no material issues. So congratulations. That's great, you guys.
And, and my congratulations goes to our staff because what I have, what appears to me is we got a very clean bill of health. Is that right?
I completely agree.
Yeah.
Yeah, good job. Doesn't mean I don't have a few questions.
Of course not.
Are we waiting for Craig to get started?
Yeah. And I would like to do that. Cause the first item on the agenda is the wage study report update, which I think Mike Swallow is going to give. And maybe maybe Craig is sufficiently familiar with this that, um, uh, he doesn't need to sit in on it. Have you, Mike, have you been in contact with him recently?
Yeah, off and on through the process. He and Jen, we've covered and John, we've kind of walked through the hoops and I think we're good to go.
Okay.
Roger, before we just kind of ease into it, do we want to officially start the meeting?
Call immediately to order, yes.
We have the, you have the, but I just for the recording and stuff.
Yes, okay, I'm, uh.
Give Molly a second. Please. Thank you.
This is Wednesday, December 14th. 1:04 in the afternoon. Out to Utah. We're now convening the meeting to, um, uh, the budget committee meeting for the town of Alta. And the first item on the agenda is the wage study report update by Mike Swallow.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. If I start digging too deep into the wage, Jen, you let me know and boot me along. But we, uh, I think we embraced this exercise spent two or three months ago overall, and, uh, we started out with an exercise that invited all the employees to offer their perceptions about um, job valuation, worth of work, things that influence the value of jobs. And so for your basic background, the public policy is the foundation for this exercise and for the instrument that, that you're going to see here. I better share my screen. And so that public policy says that to legitimately and legally differentiate in pay, the methodology needs to include proportional differences between job knowledge, responsibility, difficulty and work environment. And so over the years, I've I've developed an instrument that accomplishes that. I've worked in uh, the public arena now over for, for over 40 years with, with local governments in multi-states. And it's pretty well received. I think Jen, it was pretty well received there, you and John and and Craig thought this worked pretty well. So the way it works, uh, these proportional differences requires some method of quantification, and that's what you see in the matrix. Responsibility is listed as factor one because your workforce put that at the highest priority of those elements that should influence the value of their job.
So just interrupt you, interrupt you for a moment, please. Um, so these were these percentages were assigned by our own workforce, not by you. Is that correct?
Uh, I assigned the percentages, the workforce picked the priority order.
I see.
And so the percentages, it's a distribution of a core base points, which is just 40, I mean 20. So you got a, the highest value on this responsibility factor is eight. And there's science to the distribution of numbers. I don't think you need to or want to hear about that, but just know that there's this thing called the law of just noticeable difference. So it's, it's included in the the rate of change in numbers in the system on each of these pages. So I did assign that 40. The second element of interest or priority was job knowledge. And so there's my seven down there at 35% of that. And each of these factors have what I refer to as dependent and independent variables. So the level nature and type of controls over the work influenced the level nature, type of accountability and accuracy. The job description is the control tool. And so effort was made on the part of managers to make sure those documents were up to date. I got copies of them and use those as my myopic perception of the jobs. So knowledge, we look at that skills and abilities and formal education and training needed to perform the job. Experience is an element of the job description, a minimum qualification. It's not how much time somebody has in the job. But it's what you as an entity would require as a minimum to enter into the job to meet those minimum qualifications. Also, part of job knowledge is special recognition for licenses and credentials. Industry related, state required, and those different kinds of components, but those are also reflected in the job descriptions. We looked at the difficulty of work in terms of judgment and decision making influenced by complexity and variety of work. Also, an element of difficulty is a reference to stress, stress in the workplace, the nature of the work and how, how much interaction with the community, with, uh, professionals, anybody that might influence or have to deal with the city. So there's this thing here. It says critical incident stress. That's public safety specific. And so considerable stress, I typically award that for any job that has to interact, interact face to face with the public. Last on the four priority listing was the work environment. Physical effort, working conditions. All again, reflected through the job description and what we understand about the job. Your staff, uh, your management team have final review uh, fine tuning role to play here yet. But I assigned these values initially hazard uncertainty is an aspect of work environment. Public safety jobs, whatever you, I award here is doubled because of the life threatening environment. Working in the public right of way, operating equipment. And things of that nature influence the job. So what ends up happening is every job goes through the valuation exercise. Now, there's a methodology in here and Jen's acquainted with that. So after the dust settles with the committee, then pursuing a strategy for implementation or options, then there will be some refining based on again, your subject matter expert input. And I don't know if Jen wants to comment about that yet or not, but I think Jen's pretty well tuned into it. So once we've got the value of our jobs numerically structured, the, the thing that's significant is that if you've worked in organizations, you're all probably familiar with a pay grade system or structures. And this methodology kind of eliminates the pay grade. In the old tools, you take job value and points and convert them to bands and bands to grades and grades to dollars. And so what is, uh, what is found valuable by the other entities that are using this is that every job has a standalone market based pay range. And so things that influence the worth of work and jobs. For example, right now, market sensitivity, market sensitivity is beating hard on public safety. On, uh, building inspectors and other kinds of jobs like that where the the labor pool is kind of shrinking a little bit. So when market sensitive issues occur, we can deal with them on a job by job basis. There are some tools in here that help us do that. After we've got a settling point for our job value, our structure here, we go to market. And we pull in our market data and try to explore and do, we do explore the worth of work question. So in this, uh, data pool here, we have our town manager, our administrator with the job value. We have localities that are contributing to the perception and the calculation of what that might be, but it's expected that there will be some dramatic differences between the market and yourselves. And even amongst the players, a trend. So if we explore statistically, the predicted rate of pay based on our survey group, what would a job at a 2445 result be? What would that starting pay be worth? It's also a trend line from the highest value job to the lowest value job in our, in our structure. So we see, if you remember your stats classes, it's a regression analysis. And each of these job values over here are predicting a pay rate, which we see showing up in these columns, the survey trend, minimum, mid and maximum. Spread that out there a little bit. But we see at the, the landscape falling out on our chart here. And so this is the trend from our market, our sample group, starting pay, their midpoint and the top end, their range max. And the, the dots here all represent one of these values out to actual pay for individuals in these positions. Uh, these down here that are kind of off the chart are your part timers. And you can see those numbers down in here. So we get that snapshot of the marketplace. And then everything flows from the workbook into a pay plan. And there are dynamics all the way from the first tab in this workbook clear through into this implementation or excuse me, the pay plan section. But, uh, if we had a question about any of these job values, or if we felt there was some market sensitivity driving the circumstance that isn't resolved through this effort directly. We might be able to go to this regression results tab here and notice this column that says a market adjustment. But if we had things going on, heavy duty in our public safety environment, which we know we have, if I change this, if I put in a one right there, notice out in column nine, an increase and then everything else. The influence of that market adjustment is instantly reflected in the pay plan. So you've got that dynamic at your fingertips. But back in the pay plan.
Now, could you go back for a moment and explain what the market adjustment means?
Yeah. Okay. So that after we've settled and we're comfortable that the jobs have been properly valued using our four factor methodology. If at the end of the game, after the whole process is ended, if we haven't found a solution because market is working it a lot harder than we've calculated it to do, then you can adjust for that situation in a temporary basis out here in this column H. And so what I did a second ago is I put in the number, the value one right here. Changed that 11.14 to a 12. And it give you now a new range of pay based on your market sensitive determination. So it's a it's just an instrument that allows you, the management team to address situations that will come and go, will complicate your pay plan strategies. If you can't recruit, things of that type of situations. So we've got again, back over to the pay plan. Whoops. Sorry about that. Let's get back here. So out here at the end of our workbook, there's a tab that's referred to as our implementation table. So everybody falls out on this that's on your work, on your payroll. And, uh, we look at the placement of these individuals on a pay plan. We look at where their current pay falls within this proposed range of pay. Um, I've offered within this instrument, some additional tools that allows you to explore philosophy and circumstances that such as compression. You have to deal with that concept in the workplace. Does that a familiar thing?
Now, what, what's it mean?
Yeah. What happens is if you have a stable workforce and then you have attrition happening, people migrating out and newcomers being hired, if it's a multiple person job. If you have a market issue driving your ability to offer and a rate of pay and that offer to the new hire is equal to or greater than the rate of pay for those that have been there forever.
Okay.
There you go. That's, that's one form of compression. The other form is supervisor subordinate. So if I'm working for a manager and, uh, you're grooming me or somebody to become the next position up there, the and if there's not at least some margin, a good percentage difference between my pay and the manager's pay. I'm not going to want that added responsibility if the amount of money doesn't suggest that it's worth it to me. So that's managerial supervisory subordinate compression. So usually I recommend that supervisor subordinate pay ought to be a gap of at least 15%. Or the manager is working way too hard for the amount of money he's probably, or she is probably collecting. Yeah. So everybody gets sorted out into this. Um, the other aspect of this table is I call it, I label it organization reset. And it allows you to reflect on the history of the worker in the workplace. And if when the, the individuals were hired, if you gave recognition or credit to a career path that they followed to acquire the knowledge, skills and abilities needed to do the job. Most often that, that is true. So I had those, those columns hid, hidden. But over here, column R is the date in the position that these individuals occupy. And you can see how many years that they put in with the town. And, uh, so we just asked the questions that everything, if all things would have been healthy, where would we have predicted their pay to be within this range that's now being considered for implementation? And, uh, so this tip adjustment, time and position, this is arbitrary. So right now it's got a 1% in there, but depending on your organizational philosophy, the rate of movement in the pay range can be anywhere from a half a percent to two or three or 4% depending on how pay progression gets managed. Anyway, you take a look at that. And then you go back in time and if all things hadn't been considered, would you be willing to explore the, the next most recent five years prior to the hire date? And some percentage adjustment there. Put all those puzzle pieces together and you come up with a predicted rate of pay based on that exploration. I mean, there's nothing mandatory about any of this. It's a tool that lets you explore the what-ifing environment for pay effectiveness of pay and, and, uh, the satisfying of pay objectives. But, uh, this compression concept may not even be an item that you would choose to even recognize. If you are a performance based organization, if you have quality performance management happening, uh, very likely that the newcomers can pay, be paid more than the old timers. Whoever gets recognized for the greatest contribution should get, you know, a commensurate rate of pay. That's the concept. So Las, the city of Las Vegas, that's what they said. We don't believe in compression because our advancement is all performance based. So there's an idea for, for contemplation and discussion. Back to the pay plan then, once you kind of drill down and get a time to do that, I don't want to consume your whole day to day, but you drill in a little closer on the influence of this pay plan and Jen's got, I think, got her arms around it pretty good. And Craig and John. But here's a tool in the toolbox that, that is significant, this thing called a competitive objective. Once we have a feel for who it is that's contributing to the analysis, those competing entities out there. Do you want to be at parity with them? The number right now that's appearing in here in this pay plan is parity, market average. But if you were of the opinion as an elected body that your situation needs, it calls for some more aggressive pursuit of the marketplace, you could plug in a value here like five. So if I went 5% above the market parity point right now, you get a refresh, this whole plan refreshes. All of the data flows into that last implementation tab, and you can see the ongoing or the immediate influence of some posture that you might like to explore with that market group. of some posture that you might like to explore with that market group. So maybe it's the upside, maybe it's the flip side of that. Maybe when you look at the three final decision environments, the need to pay, the ability to pay and the willingness to pay, once you've, you've got those things nailed down. If the ability to pay is a problem, you might have to so go negative on that. Maybe you go minus five percent. That changes the relationship to the market group and modifies the pay plan and changes the strategy for implementing this new approach. So it's, the dynamics are, are immediate in every aspect of the, of the workbook, all the way back into the job valuation instrument. And so after conversation, if you as a, a body of decision makers felt like responsibility, maybe shouldn't have been the highest valued element. You could come right in here and say, let's make that the thirty five percent, you'd make that a seven. And as soon as you make any of those changes, it flows all the way through the job valuing tab, all the way through the regression outcome and into the implementation. So you have have a toolbox here that will keep you healthy and safe with whatever issues you want to address going forward with a pay plan, attracting and retaining your talent and things like that. So.
Uh, my first reaction is wow.
That's what this is called. That's the worth of work tool. That's the wow.
That's not what I meant. I meant this is, I, 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 this is amazing. How long have you taken to, to put this thing together? Years, I presume.
It's a, it has evolved over years. And somehow I get the, the saw gets sharpened a little bit from year to year. I, I think it's kind of, it's almost there right now, except for what fine tuning you have the ability to do on your own, on your end to tweak it, to make it say what you think it best should say.
So Roger, if I might interject.
Please.
I apologize for, for my tardy attendance. But I, I, I think first off, this is not a decision meeting. This is just a briefing. And the point of the briefing meeting is to introduce you guys to, you know, the tool that we're, that we're, that we're using. And the fact that we've used an outside expert with a sophisticated methodology to ensure sort of, uh, that we have a framework upon which to give, give raises. And that framework should adjust for basically a couple of things. One is what's the outside market doing? And as you can see, Mike's got a lot of data from, you know, reasonable comparables. And the other thing is to make sure that we've got sort of internal fairness between positions supervisor and advise and, 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 uh, and have some consistent framework to, to use. So I think Mike's done a really good job of that. In terms of where we are, uh, my, you know, my review of the results is that we're more in line than I expected. So there, there are a few areas where we're out of line. The exceptions are really at the top of, of the pyramid. Uh, with, with John Gilner being, you know, the one that, that, that is showing up as a noticeable exception. Uh, but we're also at the point where Jen and John have not had a chance. There's some fine tuning that they wanted to give, uh, Mike. They haven't done that yet. So that will be done, you know, shortly. And then that data will go back to Mike. It will, you know, change the framework a, a little bit. But after that's done, then I, I think what, then I think this material should be distributed to the town of Alta Council. And then they should discuss the, the framework and how they want to deal with, with some of the issues that, that it raises. Uh, and essentially provide Roger with some guidance on how to deal with some issues that he's raised. One is the, the bonus structure that we have, and the other one is just, uh, where we're out of line. You know, what do we want to do about that? And then eventually, uh, uh, Roger should then come back and present the individual raises that he wants to give. So again, not a decision making, just a briefing so that the town council can understand the framework that has been introduced here. Uh, some more work to be done by Jen and John. Then it goes back to Mike and after that is complete, then we'll distribute this tool to the town council so that they can have that next level of discussion about what do they want to do about these things? Is that all relatively clear or are there questions for either uh, me or Mike that people want to raise at this point in time?
I, I'm going to hold my question about the plan. As where to go, because I guess I just don't have my head around this enough to make an action plan. A quick comment on that would be that I, when we get down to assigning individual values or making changes in individual employees' wage rate, I, I don't really embrace that that should be done at the council level or done in public. I support the idea that, um, you know, that's a Roger, John, um, and then either Jen or Mike for their subordinates with Roger and John. So I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna hold off on embracing the let's look forward to this all coming back and that the council can make these decisions because I just don't think.
Uh, by the way, John, I, I agree with you and, and, uh, I, I must not have been, I, I wasn't clear in what I presented. So let me be clear. Uh, I think there are, I think the part that comes back to the town council is the framework. And then based upon that framework, the town council can see, do we have some major raises that are going to break the budget? Or are they generally, you know, how they want, what general guidelines do they want to give Roger? I agree a hundred percent that it is not the town council that should be doing individual raises. It should be under the auspices of Roger. And that's why I said the final step would be for Roger to revert with recommendations for the twenty four fiscal plan regarding what we do in, you know, total sum of payroll changes.
I think the numbers that sort of reflect where my head would be at this, I'm on the implementation options page, the one with the orange. And our existing base salary is liability or estimate is eight forty one eighty nine. And if we make these adjustments, it's going to go to nine fourteen uh, oh fifty seven, and that that would represent a eight point seven nine percent increase in aggregate.
Yep.
So I, I think that's like about the kind of level that this body. I mean, I think that's where we come up with a number that we give to Jen that goes into next year's budget as sort of that, that kind of aggregate number is where I'd be kind of comfortable participating.
Uh, uh, again, that's exactly, I, I think there are two issues, John. Uh, one issue is what's the budget issue, which you just identified in the aggregate budget issue. I, I do think that there have been some questions raised around whether we want to continue to do the cash bonus part. I think that's a second issue that the town council should have a voice on. But the individual, you know, how, how to then implement it, I think is completely up to Roger in consultation with the appropriate town staff.
Do the, um, salary numbers that are in the H column, again, on the page uh, implementation option and the the line I was referring to a minute ago is line thirty eight, but uh, under column H, do those numbers not include the current bonus program? Or do they include the current, current bonus program? Jen, do you know?
Um, they.
Cause the bonus.
Believe that they do not.
Percentage of base.
They don't include the bonus and they don't include some, most of the staff is on an hourly rate. And so it does not also include, um, like any OT work and stuff like that.
Oh. Well, that's pretty significant. It's going to make it seem like his proposed numbers a lot closer to what we're doing. When we include those things like overtime and what have you. Let me, let me ask you.
John, the, the big, uh, the big discrepancies are in salary people. So overtime. You know, it doesn't apply. Right.
But the bonus, which is as a, don't you usually give the bonus is like five percent of a base pay or something? So there, it would relate to how much they're getting in this pay.
Yeah.
Let me ask you, uh, just sort of a little more fundamental question and, and I, um, I mean, there's a lot of meat here. You could spend a week, you spend a weekend, uh, watching football and getting through this thing to really. I'm not sure that's going to be next weekend. Um, interesting though, I, I, I just want to make sure I have a few things of the proposed number right in my mind, Mike. These, uh, proposed numbers, they're largely being driven by being outside the range on some of these job. Some of these job description and, and related min, min, average and max range. Are they also being adjusted or, or, or maybe I just missed that day in school? Where, where does it come in? Do we think the person's doing a good job or do we think the person's doing an exemplary job or an extraordinary job? What, what, where would you point to as the, where that input is coming into the mix?
Yeah, that is entirely another piece to the equation of compensation. So I, I failed to say on the front end is that we go to great lengths through this exercise to separate the worth of work from the worth of the worker.
Yeah. And so you're not really dealing with the worth of the worker in much of this, in this analysis, you're just sort of sticking to the more quantifiable side of the equation. Yeah. And then as the decision maker needs, you know, to look at the range and say, well, this is the range for that job. But we think our guy is a rock star and we're going to pay him outside the range. Or we think our, uh, trying not to be sexist about it, our female rock star and we're going to pay her outside the range. But that's all sort of not in the worksheet. That's, that subjective element of it is this is just sort of teeing up the decision maker to make good decisions. But isn't, and it's factoring lots of subtlety about the individual job and and what the average person doing this job has in terms of tender, but it's not tenure, but it's not reflecting like the extraordinary tenure of some of our people.
Right, yeah, the, uh, what ends up happening on this initial placement is that the new hires are more likely to find themselves or you define them below the new recommended minimum. So they'll show up and with some adjustment in that other column. But if they've been there at any, for any length of time, and if you've exercised a common practice to try to move employees as quickly as they qualify to the midpoint of the pay range, which is what I promote. Then you get them in a position, you kind of get golden handcuffs on folks and those rates of pay are market competitive. They'll, they'll be there. Even when you do a study like this, they'll be within the ranges. But, uh, so.
And that's based on what kind of tenure, three to five years, tenure, 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 three to five?
Good, good numbers there. Three to five would be pretty common to get the midpoint. Uh, again, based on quality of the contribution, the knowledge, skill and abilities, whatever they do to demonstrate to you that they've earned it.
Yeah, and, but of course you have to factor that with ability to pay too.
Exactly.
And that's where the size of the town kind of comes in is when you're balancing that exercise to get people to midpoint, I think that that's a fine objective. Um, but you have to consider the ability for us to pay too, right?
Yeah, right. But that's not his problem.
Right, that's still our problem. I'm just trying to figure out what's left for us to be that, that's our problem. I, I agree with Roger. Yeah, that's right. I think.
One of the. Okay. We, we're going to have to suspend this discussion because we got two more items, uh, that we're behind on in the budget committee. And I'd like to pick this up again with you, Mike and Craig and at least, um, John and Jen. I hope that you're still available to us.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, we, we owe, we owe Mike some data back, you know, Rod, uh, John just highlighted, John Byrne highlighted some of it, like, like the, the cash bonus so that we can include that. We also have some fine tuning on, on the ranking stuff. So let us do that work first, Roger, and then once that's done, then I think it makes sense to go back through the framework with you and Mike.
Okay, sounds good. Plan. All right, let's move on. Uh, December amendment fiscal twenty three budget, Jen?
Great.
Thank you, Mike.
Great model, Mike. Thanks for your help. Thanks for your help, Mike. That's really.
Thank you, Mike.
Wow.
Thanks, Mike. Um, hello.
Hello.
So, um, I think it was either one or two years ago, the town council started doing these mid-year budget adjustments. Um, and you know, I think it's quite helpful for the council, at least every six months to review these things. Um, we, what I was going to maybe do is just do a quick highlight um, of what's going on here with this budget adjustment and then allow for questions. Does that sound okay to everybody? Okay, so, um, and I, just to be clear, um, because there were two drafts of this document, these documents set out, sent out to everybody. I want to make sure everybody is looking at the documents that are dated December thirteenth. So the budget worksheet itself has a date in the top right corner. And then the, um, my budget narrative also has a date of December thirteenth on it. So just making sure everybody's looking at the same documents. Um, the key highlights.
Can you share that screen? Can you share that on the screen?
Oh, sure. Um.
Right, and that's the spreadsheet, the, the spreadsheet that, um, some of the ninety five thousand, not ninety one thousand.
Correct.
Yep, if you could share that, that's a great document.
Big improvement. It's really makes it revealing this a lot easier. Thank you.
Think I've got the right one here.
Well, this says December fourth.
Oh, it does. Can you guys see that?
Mm hmm.
Okay, it's the way my screen splits. Once I do this, it's, it is hard to tell. Okay, I'm going to kind of skip over page one, which, um, is the highlights. But, uh, just verbally to give you the highlights of what we've done with, um, this mid-year budget adjustment is. I found the way the previous, um, capital projects plan expenses, the way they were embedded into the general fund budget for me made it really hard to kind of understand in a snapshot outside of the Excel document that Chris Colley's produced for the, um, capital projects plans. I just felt like it confused the general fund budget. And so, um, what I've done is I removed all of the embedded capital fund projects from the general fund budget. We, Cassell and our accounting was already set up with a capital fund, um, projects fund budget itself. And so I've just decided to utilize that. And in the budget worksheet, which we'll pull up maybe in a minute, um, I did make notes on any sort of movement of money from one GL code to another so that everybody could clearly track how I moved that money. Um, I hope that you were able to follow along with, with that well enough. Um, so that's the kind of the first point I want to make. Um, the second point I want to make is that there were just a hand, there really were just a small handful of expenses that, um, due to, I think, myself. Due to, I think, myself being new and trying to understand where we put things in the budget and how we go about doing that. In various departments um that had to increase, but those were all fairly small increases, a couple in the Marshals Department. Et cetera. The big thing that I guess I want to point out. On this December highlight sheet that we're looking at. Is that about fifty percent of this ninety-five thousand dollars is the money um that we got from UTA. That we are expending on the Alta Town Shuttle. So that really kind of, if you, and that's a one-time.
Washout.
Revenue stream um that we have. So I just kind of want to point that out when we're looking at these numbers. Uh, this is just the general fund. Um, I didn't do the same exercise. For the water fund or the sewer fund. There actually are no changes to the sewer fund in this December amendment. But in the water fund, we did do um a small adjustment for um anticipated changes in our contract with the service area. I felt like those budgets were simple enough that I I didn't do this exercise just due to lack of timing and whatnot, but. Does anybody have any questions about this or any specific projects?
Uh, I'd like to make a comment, and that is um item under, the second item under expenses ten dash forty-one dash six thirty. Called Mayor's discretion. And um I would like to have with the town council's approval, or for with the budget committee's approval. I'd like to have the opportunity to be able to fund some things that I would consider to be relatively minor. But in the interest of the town, without, if they don't happen to fall in a particular category. Uh, and I would um propose that that be retrospectively evaluated. You know, come July, if you think I misuse that money, you can um. You know, take it away from me next year. But um that, there's some, from time to time, there's there's something that needs to be done. Uh, in my opinion, that doesn't really fit neatly in someplace and rather than distort the whole. System or go to the town council for a three thousand dollar item, I'd like to just have that. Opportunity.
Also, like, one thing I would like to point out to the council is that, you know, this this budget recommendation, it, you know, this is coming to you. I fully expect the town council to have discussions about any sort of line item they so choose. And if you, you don't have to approve this in its entirety as presented, you can adjust numbers. I will do my best to adjust them on the fly so that um. In the regular council meeting, if you want to propose, if the budget committee wants to propose something different, I can try and address that. In real time as best I can, um but you, you know, you you have options here, so I just want to remind the budget committee of that.
I was wondering, I know we've received an email from Mike Mon and looking for some monetary support. For the shuttle that's helping out with the UTA buses, is that in this?
Yes, it is. So we are in our, in one of. The li- this version of of the budget includes fifty-five thousand dollars towards that shuttle. Um, and so we we have um through the, throughout this project, we've increased that contribution level. We're receiving fifty from UTA and we're putting in fifty-five.
Okay, perfect. I just, I just wanted to see, thank you.
So Jen, we're putting in fifty-five thousand of our own outside of the fifty thousand that UTA.
No, five of our own.
Thank you, yeah.
That that's the proposal, yes.
Great, and then. Roger, to your point, could you speak to a scenario in which you would need this ten thousand dollars? I'm trying to wrap my mind around why that shouldn't come before council review.
Let let me uh chime in because the the uh project that we just did or just reviewed. Which was uh Mike Swallow project. Was a project that came up, you know, after we'd already approved the budget in advance. And the mechanics of getting the budget variance, it's sort of mid midstream was extraordinary. You know, it was quite, uh it consumed a lot of time, frankly. As much time as as actually managing the project. And so I, to me, I think things come up occasionally. They might also come up in the form of of, I I I think Mike Maury raised uh something about a three thousand dollar. Uh uh item that he wanted uh done. I I. Sometimes the mechanics of getting approval on stuff takes much longer than the actual value of it. And generally budgets have some discretionary money. Uh, in fact, the this town of council Alta budget is one of the few things that I've seen at the multimillion dollar level. That actually has no discretionary.
No offense, Craig, but I've been on the budget committee for a long time now, since I've been on the council. We've never had a line item like this before. I'm not saying that it's not, you know, we don't need, we can approve, we can't approve it. I'm just saying that ten thousand dollars. If you look at our budget, it's a lot of money. I mean, what was it, the last budget meeting? We were hemming and hawing over what to give. ACVB money, and you know, I mean, that's just why this budget is very tight. And I've just learned over the years, there are so many things that we argue about. And there's only so many things we have no control over, so I'm not, I'm not against this option. It's just something that's very new for a town budget. And I get what you're saying that things are slow and ask for money is a process, but we are a municipality. And so those things are there for a reason. They're there to protect spending. They're there to ask for money. And so again, things are meant to be slow and done a certain way. Certain studies are supposed to be reviewed by the council, not just done, so. I'm not, again, I'm not opposed to this. It's just something that's new. Um, I've never seen it since I've been on the budget committee. And also, Craig, I I know you, you are more used to private budgets. This is a municipality, so it's just something that's different. I don't know of many municipalities that have discretionary funds like this, that just don't have an earmark. So again, it's just something that I may not be ready to approve at this time because to me it's just so new. I'm not against it, though. I just need some time to think about it. This, again, is a lot of money for our little budget.
And to follow on Elisa's points, respectfully, Craig, I was asking our mayor for his take on what he wanted to use those funds for.
I'll give it two specific examples. I attended the um council mayor's meeting last week, and they have um. They basically sponsor a luncheon and a discussion for the the mayors in the. In the county. And I said, well, you know, maybe it'd be a good idea for us to do that at Alta. And um as far as I know, there's no. There is no item, line item in our budget into which this would neatly fit. But it probably costs, I mean, there are about fifty people there, so say twenty bucks a head, that's uh. A thousand dollars. I'd like to be able to do that in the in the um interest of just kind of community relations. Uh, so there's one example. Another example is um. The UDOT in their development of the gondola program or proposal. Uh, did a lot of renderings around um showing where the towers were in various places. But none of them happened to be in our town. And I'd like to have something that would illustrate what the gondola would look like. Um, as seen in Alta. And that's a few hundred dollars. Now, so, I mean, if something like that, I could probably just, I would just pay for it if the town. If, if there's no other place in the budget for it. But um when it comes to a few thousand dollars, I'm not, I'm less interested in paying for it. So those are a couple of examples, Sheridan. Um, John has his land, his hand up, though.
Yeah, I I mean, I I think that the, you know, that those um examples. Are fine examples of things you should ask us to do, and we could put a line item in the. Um, you know, if there really aren't funds available for it, and I suspect there aren't because we try to budget really closely. That's, that's where. Procedure like we did with the wage review where I would, I would really take exception. But that was an extraordinarily difficult process. It didn't even take a day. Within two hours. Enough council people had responded affirmative to spending the five thousand bucks and it was green light, let's go ahead and do it. So I don't know, it's our role, you're supposed to have to ask us. So I think the turnaround on the wage uh review was extraordinarily fast, less than a day. And we do periodically update the budget, and honestly, you know, I I guess I think um. If you don't want to make a specific proposal for an expense so that it can be included in a given budget update. You know, you can add a new expense item to these updates. Then I think you should have to come and ask us. That's our role. That's what, that's how the state devises it, and frankly. Um, I agree with the magnitude of this is just extraordinarily large for us. And it it goes against this, you know, even if you could rationalize some way. That it works within the state code. I'm not sure it does, I don't know, but um. I I I'm also gonna take exception that it's commonplace. It may be commonplace in private industry. But I've heard that a few times that, oh, this is commonplace. Well, I went through the Salt Lake City budget, I went through the Brighton budget, I went through the Sandy budget, I went through the Salt Lake County budget. None of them have any discretionary funds for their mayor, so I'm gonna say in the municipal world, it's anything but commonplace. And the states, you know, the whole spirit behind this very complex accounting system, which Jen. And Molly maintained for the town, the whole, the the big driving force in the state's. Um, approach is that you're gonna have no unbudgeted expense. That, you know, they want to see unbudgeted expense be zero. And so when you you say, well, we budgeted a ten thousand dollar discretionary account, ah, you know, it's semantics, I suppose. But you're clearly not living with the uh intent of the state. Um, even if it, if it, you know, wasn't violating one of their rules overtly, you're breaking the system. You know, the whole thing is about everything ties, everything's been budgeted. And we don't want to have any unbudgeted funds, and frankly, having unbudgeted funds is also um opening the. Uh, the fraud triangle. You're creating opportunity for fraud. And we just don't want to go there. Uh, I'm not suggesting you would act fraudulently, Roger, or anything like that, but. Having unbudgeted money, the slush fund, that's exactly what the state doesn't think you should have. And I agree with them, everything needs to be budgeted. And I I'm sorry if you think that coming to us and asking is is too burdensome, but. That's the way it's supposed to run, and and I think we should keep doing it by the book and not create this account.
Tell you what, um, I withdraw my request for that item.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, and and the items that you propose are likely things that I would support. We budget.
Okay, all right, so I'll figure out another way to. To uh make them work.
We get if they're under five thousand dollars, we can go the same route we did. Jen, I don't want to, maybe you should outline the process, but if it's under five thousand, Jen, isn't it pretty simple? We would just do what we did with the wage review, that it doesn't have to go through a purchasing procedure and what have you.
Yeah, there's kind of, there's, there's two things you want to consider there. One is the the threshold of the amount, the five thousand dollars for um creating to. You know, we have different levels, but the five thousand and below, you don't require any phone bids or anything there. But then there's also just the issue of, do you have money in a line item that is appropriate for that? So you want to make, and what we did was we identified with the wage study that we didn't have money in the right bucket. And so we did that administrative transfer to move the right money into that bucket, and then with this proposal here, we're we're fixing that now. And putting that original item back up to its original amount, and then the other item stays where it was.
And and you know, just thinking ahead to the next budget, you know, to have some sort of a public relations account. Under the administration, I mean, isn't at least the one thing you were talking about, Roger, to me, that's public relations.
Yeah.
You know, so if we want to put a lot of public relations line item in the next budget, uh, you know, I think we could probably get our arms around that. It's just having it be completely wide open discretionary, and I appreciate you withdrawing your uh requested. Honestly, that was the only one um of these that I that I think is, was controversial of all. All the rest of this is really uh better, of course, and I think we could approve it and move on.
Okay, controversy gone. What's the next move on this? Do um, do we? You know.
Well, I will um, we have that number adjusted, it re- it'll be reflected in one other number. And I'll just have to walk through that with the council when we get to the regular meeting. Basically, it's gonna ta- change two numbers. You guys can still see my screen, right?
You'd say the consensus, though, is that we're, this group is in support of passing the. Approving the uh proposed amended budget.
Um, yes, minus with that one adjustment.
Let's see, um.
So.
We, you know, we're really not finished with the budget committee meeting because we have the financial statement and audit by.
Correct.
Rod Stewart, so we're gonna overrun here a little bit. Can um, can we go to?
So Billy, Ron, is he with us, Molly, or are you having a hard time getting him to move from the attendee to that? So Ron, if you, I think Molly's trying to initiate a move for you. You might have to um click on a pop-up window. To get moved over into the, there you are.
I'm here.
Okay, you're on.
Great, well, thanks for allowing me to be here on a snowy day. Thanks for allowing me to be uh safely warm in my office. So I appreciate that. Let's see, so I always said, my name is Ron Stewart, uh with Gilbert and Stewart CPAs. Uh, we were contracted to do the audit for your, your district or for your town for the, the end of year, June thirty, two thousand twenty-two. So um what I'd like to do, um, you've got capable people that understand the numbers of of the financial statements. What I'd like to do is just kind of tell you about our process and what we go through as auditors and. And the opinions that uh we're gonna give to you and what those mean for you, so. There's really three things that we look at in 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 your town. We want to, we want to make sure that the financial statements that you have in front of you. Are materially correct and you can rely on those numbers. We want to make sure that your internal controls are um designed, that they're implemented and they're effective in in safeguarding the assets of the city. And then we want to make sure that you're in compliance with uh certain aspects of state law. Um, so what I do, what I'd like to do is just go through quickly and kind of tell you about how we get to those conclusions and what those conclusions are, so. Um, I'll give you the good news upfront. You guys are able to uh have a unmodified opinion, a clean opinion or the best opinion that you can receive. So uh what that means is that we feel that, in our opinion, that you can rely on the financial statements that you have. How we come to that conclusion is we take a look at the books of the city. And then we perform a number of tests on those, on those balances to make sure that they're correct. So we'll send out confirmations. Uh, we send out confirmations for cash and for major governmental revenues and debt if there's any. Um, we look at, uh, we pull a significant number of invoices during the audit. First of all, we're looking just to make sure that the um, that there's proper approvals, that uh check matches the invoice. That is properly recorded to the, to the financial statements. Now, we just want to get a a good sense of of what's happening within your town. Now, we'll also pull fixed assets for accounts payable, uh, fixed assets, sorry, we'll pull invoices for. Um, accounts payable, fixed assets, credit cards, um, those kind of things as we go through the audit. There's, there's lots of balances and calculations that are on the financial statements too. Um, a portion of our time is going through and recalculating those. Um, a portion of our time is going through and recalculating those balances to make sure that they're reasonable. Um, that they make sense. We do that for depreciation, for payroll accruals, compensated absences. Um, some of those balances that you find on the financials. Uh, we also do analytical reviews. We'll look at the beginning as, as we start the audit. Or we'll look at those, look at this year compared to last year. Um, the year before. Look for trends, look for differences, and then start to ask questions and perform procedures to make sure we understand those differences and what happened within your town during the year. Also, as we're testing other areas of this, of the town, we'll do that as well. If we're, for instance, if we're looking at cash, we'll look at this year compared to last year, see if there's something that changed and. And I start to, to ask questions on those. And then we perform a number, number of other procedures on the, the financial statements as well. But uh through all those procedures and through our testing. Uh, we've come to the, the opinion that the financial statements that you have are materially correct. And you can rely on those numbers. The second thing we do as auditors is look at the internal controls. We don't give an opinion on the controls, but we do evaluate those to make sure that they're, they're effective. So we do that through interviews, walkthroughs, questionnaires, um. And kind of get a sense, you know, as we're testing other areas of the city, we look at, at testing those controls to make sure is there. Proper authorizations, um, does it flow the right, as, as the, the controls within the town and set it up. Um. If there was a portion of your city that just didn't have, or town that didn't have any controls. Or those controls were just completely ineffective. That would be considered a significant material weakness. Um, if there were. Areas in the city, then maybe the controls are there, but over time just weren't effective anymore. Um, those would be considered what we would call significant deficiency. Um, we've evaluated the controls within the town and feel that there's. Um, nothing that rises to the level of a significant deficiency or material weakness that we would need to bring before you. So, um, what that means is through our evaluation and testing, we feel like the controls within this, within the town are working, and that they're effective. And then the third thing we do is, um, we look at. Areas of, of state law that is prescribed by the state auditor's office. Um, we perform tests. Based on certain areas every year and then every three years and every five years. Um, to kind of get a. Uh, sense of if whether we're in compliance. Um, so the areas that we looked at this year for state compliance or budgetary compliance, fund balance, fraud risk assessment, government fees. Restricted taxes, cash management, and Utah retirement systems. So the state auditor gives us certain procedures to perform. Now, we perform those procedures, procedures, and then uh report back to you. Um, if there's any issues. Uh, through our testing and what we were asked to do this year, we didn't find that there were any issues of compliance with those areas that we looked at. So. Uh, we feel like you're in compliance with state law based on those issues. So, um, I think that this, the town is in good hands. Um, I think you guys do a good job. Of maintaining and. Uh, safeguarding the assets, um particularly the, the funds that come in. And uh. I think you're in good financial shape. So. I'd be willing to answer any questions or discuss anything further if you'd like to.
Oh, Ron, I went through the, um, your report and um. My assessment is you gave us great ace.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay. So I'm not going to contest any of that.
That's great.
Any other comments?
I had a couple of quick questions and uh. I don't know if you think we'd rather answer these in the main meeting, that's okay with me too. I don't understand how the property tax went down. From four oh eight to two fifty-eight. I thought the whole thing about if you don't do the uh. Truth and taxation hearing, it doesn't go up, but that they give you a rate that solves so that your property tax revenue. Stays close. And it went down like thirty percent. How did that work down?
That's the hundred and fifty thousand dollars that, that was um, that the council, when we pulled out of the U F S A or U F A.
Uh.
That was the part of the deal. Was to give money back to the community and. In that process. So that's, that's that hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah, that was one that uh I know was big with um Cliff, Cliff, yes.
But, but now, now is it, if we do nothing, is it going to stay at two fifty-eight? Or if we do nothing, does it go back to four hundred?
No, it stays at two fifty-eight.
Oh, so it just makes doing the truth and taxation argument even more compelling.
Yes.
I mean, it's hard not to have done it when we're seeing property tax valuations of twenty and thirty percent increases. And we're getting none of that extra revenue. Um, but this is just another reason we have to do truth and taxation going forward. Thank you for that explanation.
You're welcome.
On the um, I noticed the water loan due government, other agencies. Uh, did go down from four hundred to three sixty. Uh, was. I, I was under the, a, and then also, we're not really, I, you know, we have that sort of, this is the mystery four hundred that we don't really understand that well where it came from and. For most of us think we probably shouldn't pay it back this.
Oh, that one.
Right, this, that's what this is, it went down by ten percent. A, I thought we were sort of functioning under the notion that we were going to try to leave it at four hundred. And B, I would thought maybe the wrong could comment on whether. Should, we don't distinguish between short term and long term liabilities in the enterprise fund. And would it make sense for us to reclassify this loan as a long term liability? Uh, if our intention is really just to leave it on the books?
I, I think by its nature. Uh, I think by its nature, if, if there's no terms on it. Uh, gap requires that it be treated as its current liability. So if there's no issues, there's no repayment terms. Um, then, then that's how it's classified.
Great answer. Jen, is it your intention to try to leave it at four hundred? And this is just.
Well, I just want to point out that there, there is a loan issue, but there's also, um, and I think we've talked about this, and I'm going to have Steve Rowley bail me out here if I. Misspeak, but there's also like due to's, due from's, right? That we've identified that happened. They happen via. Um, because of payroll, um, you know, payroll comes out of another account and things like that. So there'll, there's a. Little bit of, of wiggle room in that and in that it's not all the, that loan stuff. Some of it is due to the due to, due from. And then also, this fiscal year that we're talking about. There may, I'll have to double check, but there may have been in the first half of the fiscal year, a payment down. On, under um Marisondax administration, a payment down on the. That expense.
But are.
But I don't want to miss, I, I think there is, but.
I, I think you're right, Jen. I think we did do some sort of payment to it.
Such as the live. Yeah, that, I wouldn't correct it. I just wanted to make sure that we're not. That we're all on the same page, that we're going to sort of try to leave this money in place. I'm all for clearing the due to's and from, to from's each year. I actually think that makes tons of sense. Otherwise, it's really hard to understand. Cohesively what's going on with the money.
Yeah, Steve and I have been really focused on that and trying to um have a really good handle on that. Um, and there's, we have some ideas on some things that we can do to help with that. But um, I, I feel good about what we did for, for this year.
Awesome. Uh, and I know we're, I know we're uh in a hurry. So uh. The pension. Thing changed dramatically. We, we now have a pension asset of two hundred and seventy thousand bucks. That's. Would you like to comment on that, Ron? Like it went from being sort of zero to suddenly there's this fairly big asset there.
Yeah, and if you look, there's also, um, the pension liability also changed dramatically too. So. Um, I'll be perfectly honest to, as far as understanding this pension liability. Um, and pension asset thing, I think you need a PhD in something. Um, very odd. Uh, to be able to understand all this. What that means is, say, say that again.
So it was really just a reassessment or revaluation of the liability.
Yeah, I mean, they, they, they changed the, the re, their evaluation dates. Um, they're looking at the portfolio. It was probably performing better. So you have a pension asset versus a liability. Which means absolutely that, you know. The way I've always looked at the pension liability is if, if something catastrophic happened. Um, and the fund, the state fund went defunct, you know, what would our responsibility be? Um. The likelihood of that ever happening is zero, right? So, um. It, it's, it's, it's not really applicable. Um. In reality of what, what is potentially going to happen. To me, it just means that the fund is doing better than it did before. But that's, that's really a simple. Simple way of looking at it.
All, all good news though, right? I mean, it's. I don't want to look a gift horse in the mouse, mouth, but it seems like two hundred and seventy grand fell from the sky.
Only we could ever recognize it, right?
But I, I have one question, which is I, I noticed that you, 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 you noted that we were two hundred and fifty thousand dollars over the. FDIC, you know, insured limit kind of stuff. Do you feel like that's a problem? We have to do something more sophisticated on the. Cash management side, or you think that's just? It, it's sort of normal course of action and not an undue risk.
Well, I mean, there's, there's always the option to diversify and to put funds into different bank accounts, right? The level for per bank is two hundred and fifty thousand. So. Again. The likelihood of the entire financial system falling apart and, and we having to access that FDIC insurance is very low. The only really way to combat that is to diversify the funds and put them in the different um accounts, which creates. Additional challenges. As far as day to day operations too.
So would you recommend that we do that? Or, I mean, for me, it, it doesn't seem like we need to make any changes. I'm just asking if you feel like we need to make some changes.
I don't think it, it, it's warranted. And uh worth the headache.
Yep. Yeah, if that, if that circumstance ever came to be, there would be so many. Much greater problems in that society that would be. Okay, is there any other comments on this? Maybe Steve, did you want to say anything? Uh, because um. I'd like to move on to the regular meeting. Who can?
No, just a quick thank you to Ron for, and his team for their diligence and, and hard work. They're very thorough in their audits. They're very fair. We had some great discussions. Uh, some little things that, that we've worked on to improve the internal control process, just that little bit more. Um, so yeah, we really appreciate his hard work and his effort in this.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Ron.
Well, right back at Steve and Jen, they do a great job. We. We try and throw as much at them as we possibly can and they. They respond quickly and efficiently. So I think you guys are in very good hands.
Great. Glad to hear it. Okay, with that, I would like a motion to adjourn our Budget Committee meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Call on favor. Aye. Okay. Meeting adjourned. Next meeting, public hearing on the, on the um. Budget amendments. Uh, we'll begin that with um. Me calling the meeting to order. This is the. Public hearing on. The December amendment to the FY twenty-three budgets. And the first item of business is public comments. Um. Does, do, do any members of the public have comments to make on the December amendment to the FY twenty-three budgets? See, Molly, is it you who are looking to, to see others?
I am looking. So just to say that if anyone would like to make a comment, just raise your hand. Um, in Zoom, and then I can enable your video and microphone. But I did not hear of anyone ahead of the meeting planning to make a comment, so.
And just to maybe help orient, the raise your hand tool should be at the bottom of your screen. It should be visible, but you might have to hover your mouse. Towards the bottom of the. Screen to have that pop up for folks.
Not seeing any hands yet.
Okay, hearing none. I would entertain a motion to adjourn the public hearing. So I like a motion to. John Hoof, second.
Second. Sorry.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
May, most, most carries, uh, meeting is adjourned. Next meeting, we're going to call, call to order the uh regular meeting of the um. Count Council for the state, December fourteenth. Um, two thousand and twenty-two. And um. This meeting is held without a. Anchor location and is uh electronically um attended by all members um. In accordance with the declaration I made at the beginning of this month. So we'll start that off with. Any citizen input. Any members of the citizenry out there who would like to raise their hand and say. Say something to this council on any topic? If not, let us proceed to discussion and possible action to prove the twenty twenty-one. Twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two financial statements and audit by the town of the Halta, and that's to Steve Rowley.
All right, Steve's on his way back over. That was my fault.
Well, it seems like, well, Steve's moving, you know, we just had a um. Lengthy discussion. I think all the um council members were present. For that presentation that Ron gave. Um. But are there any questions about the financial statement from any of the council members that were not addressed? Earlier or anything, points you would like to make? Steve, was there anything that you felt like you needed to say?
Uh, really, the only change. I mean, there was a new standard that. Was required. To be applied, so that was the statement on leases. So that would be the only thing that was even a little bit different and that didn't impact us. Really at all, so. That was good, you know. Um, you know, as Ron stated in the last meeting, there were no reported findings, so. You know, we got what's called an unmodified opinion, so we're, our financials are in good shape. Uh, we can rely on those. Um. You know, as I mentioned, we did have some good conversations with the auditors. And so, you know, we've got a few things we've already implemented. A, as a town to make things just that much better. Um, so yeah, I. That's why I have a, again, I'm happy to answer any questions the council may still have, or if you want to dig into any of those previous questions a little deeper, I'm happy to do that as well.
I guess maybe I'll just add that, um, you know, in my new position here as town clerk, this was my first, you know. Audit cycle and um I wasn't very involved in audits when I was. The deputy town clerk, so this was all very new to me. Um, it was a very pleasant experience. Ron and his team did a excellent job from my perspective. Um, I really. Enjoyed the whole process. I learned a lot. Steve, um, in his position with us is critical. I'm. Emailing and talking with Steve at least once a week, sometimes multiple. So he's been a really valuable resource to the town. Um, and I continue looking forward to working with both of them. And I also just want to say that, you know. Most of this audited statement reflects the books that were um. Under Piper's charge before me. And she did a wonderful job of um. Documenting stuff. I mean, there were a lot of, there were a handful of questions where I was, I don't know the answer to that. And I was able to find um. Resources and records from her. And so I just, um, am very appreciative that she was thoughtful and. Her record keeping and whatnot to help me. Do my job.
Can I make a, an extemporaneous motion to. Commend. Jen. With the council to mend Jen for pulling this off. In a relatively new disposition. And um. Now, um. I, I, as far as I could tell. She's done a marvelous job and I would like to. Ask the council to. Um. Say so in some fashion. I don't know exactly what that fashion is.
Some move, some move, let's have a resolution.
Seconded.
Okay, any good discussion of.
Well said, Mayor.
Great job.
Yeah, okay, um, can we just uh do this by acclamation? I don't think we have to take a roll call vote. Yeah.
Yeah, great work.
Yeah, good job.
Jen entertain and uh. It's great to have Stephen. There with you too.
Yeah.
there with you too. Um, yeah, y'all have so much confidence in Stephen and value his contribution so highly as well.
Good, they're blushing, Jen. All right, let's um move on.
We do need to approve formally.
Oh, sorry, excuse me. Yes.
That's okay.
So let's um, I would entertain a motion to approve the twenty twenty-two financial statements and audit for the town of Alta.
So moved. Seconded.
Discussion? All in favor? Aye.
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 Motion passes. All right, we're now ahead of schedule. So I think that Chelsea signed on, she did. Um, this is Salt Lake, your district report on Tri Canyon Mass, Tri Canyons Trail Master Tri Canyons Trail Master Plan.
Well done.
Too many syllables. So, okay, over to you.
Awesome. Uh, one, thanks for having me here today. My name is Chelsea Philippi. I do work for the Forest Service on the Salt Lake Ranger District as their trails inventory and planner. And I have to go through the obligatory awkwardness of making sure I share my screen correctly.
You're not the only one who's awkward on this.
Um, do I have access to share my screen?
You should. Um, at the bottom of your screen, do you see that? Share. Yep, there you go.
All right, everyone can see us, their favorite PowerPoint presentation. Awesome. Um, well, thanks again for having me here today. Excited to talk to you all about our Tri Canyon Trails Master Plan, which I practiced saying many times. Um, so big picture, why do we want to create this plan for the Tri Canyons? And I'm sure you all know Tri Canyons are a little cottonwood, big cottonwood and milk creek canyons. And we're hoping to lay out a roadmap for us for the next thirty years to keep the area beautiful, improve our watershed and ecosystem health, ecosystem health, and continue to provide diverse, high-quality recreation opportunities. Um, we feel we need a coherent plan with a shared vision to help all of us get there together. So that's not just the Forest Service, but also local governments, partners, stakeholders, and the public. Um, we're actually excited to be constrained by different planning guidelines that are set out in our forest plan, the watershed plan, congressional legislation, and it lays out important standards for us. So as I go through this planning process, think of it as more of a remodel, making what we have better. We may need to overhaul some trails, redesign some trails, maybe even adopt some important user-created trails, but also think about protecting areas for watershed wildlife or just trail this areas. All right. One more detail now gets you into our timeline and process. We actually began this process a few years ago in twenty twenty. We realized we wanted to to get a better understanding of what is actually occurring on the ground. So we took a big focus on the trail network. We began with the user-created trail inventory, which actually looked like us walking around with GPS devices to inventory all of those user-created trails. And we also started a trail counter project. Um, this picture shows what a trail counter looks like. It emits a little infrared beam that when you walk through it, it breaks that beam and registers account. This gives us a more detailed picture of recreation trends and patterns occurring at trails with these trail counters. The next year, twenty twenty-one, we continued the trail counter project, but took that inventory of trails, um took it to focus on our system trails, and those are the trails that the Forest Service maintains and are on our maps. So with a good idea of what was occurring on the ground, this summer, we switched to a qualitative data collection, focused more on community engagement to better understand the priorities, needs, and values of visitors. So we, this summer, we did situation assessments. Um, thank you, those who, those of you who participated with us. Situation assessments are one-on-one or small group discussions where we go over the same list of questions with every group to get a better understanding of perspectives, values, and trails for recreation. We're reviewing what we've heard in these situation assessments. In more public meetings, we're calling listening sessions. So we've had a couple of these listening sessions already with some local governments, with partners and stakeholders, and we'll be having more listening sessions open to everyone in January and February. And our goal also in those listening sessions is to introduce new ways to interact with us to help us design new ideas for our trails plan. We'll take all of that information we hear that we heard in the situation assessments also, and that we've collected its data, and we'll draft our first trails plan. That'll come out in twenty twenty-three. When that's out, we'll go through another big round of community engagement, take all of that information to draft a second plan, again, do rounds of community engagement to develop a final plan. That final plan will come out in twenty twenty-four. It'll, of course, include trail maintenance, which is vital to our current trail network. It'll also have different phases for implementation. So let's say we have three phases in that plan. We'll take that first one. It'll independently go through environmental review and then be implemented on the ground. Once those those projects and maintenance projects are completed, we'll look at phase two, make sure it's relevant. It then will independently go through environmental review and then be implemented on the ground, et cetera, et cetera. So this is a different way to look at our timeline or our planning process. We've done a lot of that data collection. We're folding it into different drafts, but now integrating more of that community engagement to make sure that it does have the support and momentum from partners, stakeholders, and the public. So we're just about halfway there. So to step back for a second, I let you know, we did some list our community engagement on situation assessments. I want to go over some of the things that we heard. So we have done about sixty-plus interviews, and we're still continuing them. They've been primarily with local governments, stakeholders, and partners. And we've sorted what we've heard into areas of agreement, differences, and suggested solutions. Again, this is just stuff we've heard that we've organized. So first, we'll go through areas of agreement, which actually shook out to shared areas of concern. Um, something we heard loud and clear is that visitation is increasing in year round and maybe even like each weekday, not just weekends. Um, big concerns about transit options being inadequate, worries about impacts occurring to the watershed and ecosystem, questions about equity and access, concerns about our infrastructure being inadequate and aging, what impacts of climate change and wildfire may do to the canyons, and what kind of capacity the Forest Service has to move this forward. Areas of disagreement or where the differences occurred was in what type of management approach we should take when we think about visitors? Roadside parking? What type of systems we should think of when we improve our existing trail system? Adding new loops, improving connectivity? What trails to adopt or what user-created trails should disappear? And what future uses may need to be allowed and on which trails? We all know e-bikes is an issue, but what else might come down the pipe in the next twenty to thirty years that we haven't even thought of yet? And then suggested solutions that we heard, improve the transportation options, ways to improve the trail network, ideas on how to disperse and or concentrate visitors, how to use ski areas as recreational hubs, different options for user groups such as user-specific trails, hike only or bike only, how to improve our signs throughout this borders, and how we need to remain transparent with this planning process. So one way we're trying to encourage people to engage with us is through this tri canyontrails.org website. It has a ton of information. And and as I mentioned, there's upcoming meetings, opportunities for community engagement. If you were to click here on the meetings and events, that would show you when and where our next three public meetings are. But what we're really excited about is the button that involves your engagement, how to participate with us. There are three really exciting ways to participate. The first one is an online map through an organization called Social Pinpoint. When you get into that map, you can see there are different colored layers, but on the top, there are different buttons that you can add to the map and share your concerns and share your ideas. The first couple talk about trail maintenance, your ecosystem concerns, um, trail at infrastructure, and those are actually points you can drop on the map for where those concerns are. But they they just create an opportunity to add lines to a map. So when you think about where trails should or shouldn't be, that's an opportunity to show us on the map. If you do use this tool, I suggest and recommend that you look at the planning guidelines button so you can see the constraints of our planning opportunities. We also have a really neat survey that allows you to share different information with us that isn't as easily shared on a map. And then we have the good old fashioned just contact us, send us a question, a comment, an idea, et cetera. Okay, so that was a lot of information really quick. Any questions I can answer on what I just presented with you all?
So one is this, um, Chelsea, um, the Forest Service, and as far as I could tell, has been strapped for money for quite some time. Uh, do you anticipate that you're going to have funds to act on this in a big way?
Anticipate? Well, a couple of opportunities to think about this in a different way. Is there laying this out in different phases and having this roadmap? Is a neat way for partners to figure out how they can and can't be involved or find ways they'd like to be involved so to continue partnering with us. There are a few things hopefully coming down the pipe for the Forest Service that will allow for a little bit more funding. But then also within the phased implementation, the phases can include the amount of work that is actionable for the Forest Service. So it wouldn't be ten big items per year. The phases would look over so many years and be implemented in a way that we can handle. But very good question.
Um, and my other question is, do you specifically, this this was very general, do is there some plan specific for Alta that you're already on top of or no? Talk about Alta minute.
Um, we we're having those important conversations about where trails are, where they can be, what can be managed by who, and what kind of maintenance they need, both with the town of Alta and with Alta Ski Resort, because we know there's a lot of overlap and integration of those trails. Big picture focus is to make sure that they connect and make sure they make sense on the ground. But this first plan, as we come out with it, will have more of those details I think you're looking for of lines on the ground. But we want to start in list with listening, not just I heard it said really well the other day. We don't want to come to you asking for the recipe or the ingredients. We don't want to come to you with the baked pie. We want to make that with you and make sure we're doing it right.
If something, if I could be very specific on something I think we need badly is a kind of a a billboard trail map. Um, there there are lots of winter trail maps that you can find all sorts of places. But for uh, I don't know how many people have come around and said, gee, how do I get to Secret Lake? And it'd be nice to be able to point, here is this billboard that's, you know, was similar to a ski trail map, says, here are the trails.
Yeah, we definitely heard that too. And as you all come up with important ideas for such details, using that map or that comment option is a great way to let us know what you think is important to include on those kind of maps. So not that just it exists, but like where would you recommend it lives? Does it change per season? What rules and regulations do you see broken the most that need to be highlighted in that map?
Yeah.
So we're hoping that we get a lot of those details. And when we come out with our first draft, we've summarized them in a way that we can hear what we've heard correctly, but then hear from you what needs to be corrected or fine tuned.
Is that, can we add a restroom in those in that map?
Oh, yes, I would hope so. First, we have to add it on the ground. Then we can add it to the map, but.
Yeah, that map has a lot of options, and I think one of them is other. So if if the other buttons don't encompass something, use that one. But you guys are up there a lot. You understand different things than we do. So capturing your ideas in that resource is really important to us.
Chelsea, thank you so much for your presentation. Um, I'm looking forward to participating. Could you, is it a NEPA process that you're describing when you describe environmental review?
Yep, and that will go through the Forest Service channels. It'll be a NEPA process. Some pieces of it may need to go through the different les- levels of NEPA. So some easy stuff may be a categorical exclusion. Some might get up to the environmental assessment. Unsure if we'll be even talking about big enough changes to go through the bigger environmental impact statement. But all of that environmental review will fall under that NEPA category.
Thank you.
I had one question, which was, I think it was on slide nine, you had something about uh control mechanisms and parking was one of them. We're intimately familiar with that. There was another one that you mentioned, which I I I, did you mean, did you mean like a reservation system, an advanced reservation system?
Yeah, so we've heard a lot of ideas on ways that we could could or couldn't, should or shouldn't visit management or manage visitation levels. And so we're just listening and trying to hear what people prefer, what people don't prefer, maybe even ideas that we can't even think of. But we're just listening to those right now. And then just to touch back on the transportation issue, our Trails Master Plan starts at trailheads and parking and goes to destinations. And we're not like specifically saying what your destination is, if it's fifty feet from the trail, the ridgeline. So we won't be able to encompass any bus system or shuttle system. But what we can think about is what, how we can support those ideas through the trailhead. So if there's some sort of shuttle parking or how we do change parking to to allow for different transportation options, we just won't be able to define what those transportation options are. And then a separate Forest Service process you guys may have heard about is our fee proposal at certain trailheads. That's a separate process than this, but we are in communication with all those other processes, understanding what's going on. So as those evolve or move forward, those will be wrapped into our planning process too. So none of this is in a vacuum, even though they seem like they're very different processes.
John?
It's exciting to hear you say that your thinking starts at the trailhead. Um, because ours does too, and I think we're all excited about um more trails being built and more activity and figuring out how to accommodate e-bikes and accommodate everybody, mixed use, separate use, but but the the thing that's that seems to fall through the cracks on this bunch for us, and as this kind of echoing Elisa's comment, is the uh restrooms and parking. You know, so when you say you're starting at the trailhead, that's encouraging to me that you're giving us some consideration to what the parking is going to look like and and where people are going to, you know, have a comfort break.
Yeah.
Right, huge, right? Because as we think of how many people are visiting and the concerns for the watershed, bathrooms are definitely a big part of that. So working with folks on
Just don't have the funds to be able to deal with that. We don't have the land to be able to deal with it. So it's really exciting to hear you take We just don't have the funds to be able to deal with that. We don't have the land to be able to deal with it. So it's really exciting to hear you take some responsibility there.
Yeah, and that's the idea of the hubs too, like where do those opportunities currently exist? So how do we use our communications or our trailhead signs to get people to those current hubs as? Those parking locations with bathrooms or where are they going already? How do we? How do we best use all the tools we currently have and then discover where we need to create those tools?
Carolyn, you've got your hand up.
I did put my hand up, you know, I think that as the population continues to grow. I would hope that we were looking at some type of. Uh, bus transportation from downtown. You know, it seems to me like if we could train people that these were the hub locations. Um, to access the canyons and had more buses, perhaps our gondola question might be further put on the back burner. But it, um, it really, um, it's very congesting to have a lot of people park at the trailheads. And I think for people who aren't, like you want people to enjoy all of our trails and our access, but it is really. Difficult to train people, those parking lots and all kinds of things are quite difficult for people. So I hope that's part of the plan as well.
Right, and we, like I was saying, we can. Help share the information directly to the right places. And we can build our trailhead and some of the parking lots to accommodate any future transportation options. But we are keeping that in mind and are hopeful for good options in the future.
Hey, anybody else would like to speak to Chelsea? Ask her. Tell her.
Yes. Sorry.
Sorry, go ahead, Sheridan.
No, no, Chris, you first, please.
Uh, well, I guess I was just gonna ask Chelsea if in conclusion or just prior to concluding, uh, whether she would. Just remind us how as either as the town or as the Alta Town Council. Or as individual Alta community members, we can continue to participate. Uh, in the process, stay up to date on input opportunities and otherwise, you know, have an impact on this project.
Oh, yeah, awesome. Thanks, Chris. Yeah, right now that's that tri canyon trails.org website. We're kind of using that as our hubs for everything. We'll be putting updates there. Important, we will be also if questions get asked in that map and such, we will be answering them. And then if there are things that you you don't feel like you're able to answer or address or communicate with us, use that, contact us. This is a, this is a great starting place, that website and the tools we have. But if there are better opportunities and different ways to encompass ideas, please share that with us. Even though we're the, we're the entity spearheading this, it definitely takes all of this to make it as good as possible. And you guys know that area up there better. So anything you can share, direction for us is greatly appreciated.
Thanks.
Anyone else?
Thank you again for such a wonderful presentation and your willingness and your openness to soliciting opinions about what needs to happen. I'm often struck during these presentations, though, as to how it feels reactive rather than proactive sometimes when we don't have. Like human capacity limitation studies on the ground. And I just wonder where where we can sort of push for that, if that is. Uh, as is often said beyond the Forest Service's purview, whose purview is it? What national organization is supposed to take care of that? Otherwise, we're kind of always chasing our tail, it seems to me.
Yeah, and I think there's a lot of definition missing in capacity. Really, what what impacts are we measuring? Is it environmental impacts that are occurring via the traffic or the human visitation? Is it watershed impacts? Is it impact to wildlife? Is it impacts to our social experience out there? And then what can we do as land managers to lessen those impacts? And then does that affect how many people should or shouldn't visit the area? So when we talk about those visitor capacity studies, there's a lot of. Subjectivity to it. And so kind of teasing that out to see what we're the most concerned with helps us understand what those numbers do or don't mean. They believe this Central Wasatch Commission. Has, I think they're working with Utah State with. Uh, with Jordan Smith to do a study. And so we're sharing information back and forth. We're coordinating on that, but ultimately the information that he comes out with is. We'll see what that says. But you're right, the Forest Service is not doing a capacity study. We are setting standards for impacts on watershed and wildlife.
Thank you.
Did that answer some of that?
It did. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you very much, Chelsea. I hope, I hope we can have you back in two or three months.
Yeah.
In March.
Yeah.
Tell us where you are.
Yeah, and please, anyone who has more ideas, reach out, use that website and then check in on those public meetings if you want to come to more community engagement opportunities.
Great.
I'm happy to come back and give updates.
Great, good. Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thanks for having me.
All right, let's move on to Mike.
Good afternoon.
Got his outer clothing off for a while.
I was up shoveling, trying to uncover. But, uh. Just to, just to tie in with the presentation on the Forest Service, the ski area is working on a Trails Master Plan in conjunction. With the Forest Service that involves, you know, putting to bed some user trails. Maintaining and expanding our existing trail system and tie-ins to the rest of the network. So it's all, it's all working into that. Same. Trail plan that they're putting together for the Tri Canyons, just. Just an FYI.
Good.
Um. Thank you. You know, I sent two emails to the council, one about the shuttle service and shortage in funding and. How the rest of the town has stepped up and. I noticed that you added. In your revised budget, you had $5,000. Thank you very much for that. And how that all goes, initially, it's off to a rough start. Because the buses are arriving on time. And so when they don't arrive on time, our local shuttle is not able to move people around where they need to get to. Um, and that's weather related. Um, you know, the last. This week has been a challenging week on the road. You know, we've had, we had. Traffic issues and road closures and Red Snake on. Red Snake Monday, that was three hours to go from the center of town of Alta to the mouth of the canyon. And last, yesterday was an hour and a half Red Snake to get out. And it's, you know, it's driven a lot by the main line being closed. And when that happens, we are really impacted by all the cars and snowbirds parking lots basically are able to merge into traffic and exit before. The traffic really starts to move at any, with any speed out of Alta. We just creep along, you know, a little bit at a time, but. We're going to continue to have discussions with UDOT. You know, how to deal with that, you know, the traction law discussion and potentially a little bit more emphasis on how do we keep the main line open? In the future to and make a more equitable merge. It was reported by. The UDOT team that the merge right below Snowbird, it was at least three or four snowbird cars for every one Alta car that got to merge. They just were. A little bit more aggressive than the Alta people, I guess, but it was. You know, a light there like on the on ramps of I-15 or something might make some sense or something, but we've. We're going to continue to work on that. Um, the second letter I sent for. The consideration of the town is. You know, we'd like to put to bed or retire the roadside parking below the DPHL down through. You know, past the Peruvian. It's. UDOT doesn't like it. It's a safety issue. It's not a very good issue place for people to walk into the lots and such. And so, you know, the Forest Service told us a couple of years ago when we started talking about this, that. If we had a letter of support from the town about and letter of support from UDOT. Uh, they would consider us replacing. Or expanding parking somewhere else in the ski area if we would shut that parking down. And so that's kind of what we're. Looking to do is to kind of eliminate that. It's also. You know, I noted in my email that. That we're providing even more parking overnight parking and north side parking this year than last year to accommodate the town and the businesses and. Between those, it seemed to. Uh, reasonable request to if the council felt it was appropriate to have the mayor or someone. Write a letter of support and it will take us. You know, it's a year, year and a half to get it through the Forest Service process if they will approve it, but UDOT. Is on board and that's, any questions about that before I move on?
Is there going to be, haven't? Hasn't that mostly, that parking mostly been used for backcountry? Skiers and are they going to have another place to go?
It is not used by backcountry skiers on our reservation days. Oh, it's like today, it's probably a mix. But today, all of the north side parking in the town this morning and all of the Flagstaff lot was used by backcountry skiers. We had 150 backcountry skiers in the town of Alta this morning, at least. Cars and, and so. You know, we have, before we implemented reservations, it was not uncommon for. To have parking all the way down past their, down past, even past the Peruvian. Um, and so that was all parking that was used and in the mix. And so. I know the forest has an overall goal of eliminating also roadside parking. And we don't think it's in the best interest of customers. To have to walk down the ramp and do all of that kind of stuff. And it's just a matter of time before someone's going to. Slip and fall and have a serious injury or get hit by a car or something there. And so. We'd like to take the lead in making that move, getting rid of roadside parking. It might encourage our neighbors to put some pressure on them to do that down the road too. Um, so that's why we're trying to move in that direction. We just like to square up the Wildcat lot. It's kind of the. Odd shape. We don't park very efficiently because of that, but we've done all the NEPA work and we have actually drawings that were ready a couple of years ago. And it got put on hold because at that point in time, we didn't have. Support from the town to be able to do that. So we're asking for. If the town would be willing to support that move and we would. Close all of that parking and eliminate it and. Kind of put us in a better position overall. So it's just kind of a swap to some degree.
I think, I think maximizing the Wildcat lot just makes all kinds of sense. And so I'm very much in favor of that project. Um. Those improvements will be permanent improvements for you. Is there, um? Are you willing to give any consideration of the idea of coming up? I feel like we're sort of going back. To you for all the parking that we need for the cabin owners every year. Is there any chance that we could talk about? Some baseline number that would. That that would survive into the future? For our cabin owners and protection.
Certainly, if we could expand, you know, you know, we could look at the number and. You know, we would, we'd look for maybe a. Space for space swap for eliminating the roadside and then whatever the surplus with plus could be certainly a basis that we would make available. In Grizzly, uh, going through future as the baseline.
I think that would be great and make it easy. I mean, I don't know how anybody could oppose expanding the Wildcat. Lot if that was actually on the table. It just seems like it would be a layup and and I think it would ease some of the. You know, I don't, I don't worry that you're going to suddenly, you know. Pull the parking from all our cabin owners, but you know, the cabin owners have a certain anxiety here. And I think if we could try to establish some comfort for them, that would probably be good.
And I agree, I'm willing to do that and could enter to some sort of agreement, make that work. We'd like, what we'd like to turn to explore in conjunction with this is. Can we alter the Wildcat entry in a way that? UTA would consider again. It being safe enough for their buses to turn. We don't know if they're going to.
Yes, Mike, you cut out there for a moment. Was it a very interesting topic? How can you modify the Wildcat entry such that? Uh, you'd be comfortable with the buses. Go through that again.
So we're hoping to include that as part of this parking lot change. Uh, it just, we don't, we have to find out first if UTA is going to be willing. Uh, to to consider that. So that's, that's, that would be part of that exploratory deal. So, um. Time is a little bit of the essence on this, um, because it takes an amount of time to kind of get it all in the process and approved. So, you know, if, if, you know, we could get a letter of support from the town, we'll get one from UDOT and then we'll, we'll start the process and see where it goes. I mean, it's not a done deal. Because you still have to go through the Forest Service process. Um, any more questions on that?
Yes, thank you, Mike. Could you describe exactly how many parking spots you're asking for?
There's 90 spots that have been designed that would be added to Wildcat. Uh, some of them are on the south side, squaring up the south side, and some of them are on the north side, squaring up that side. Totally about.
Thank you. I'd feel more encouraged to support it if we knew that. The bus system was going to come in behind it with increased service again.
And I have no control over that. We're trying to. Accommodate that if we can, you know, by offering to make some changes to the entrance. But that will, it will depend on how UTA responds.
And when would you hope to start this project, Mike?
We'd hope, we'd love to be able to do it next summer. So that we could fix the entry and get the bus service. So if the bus service ramped back up, it could service both Wildcat and Albion.
So next summer being 2023.
2023, correct. Yeah, unless, you know, it just depends on, it also depends on timing to the Forest Service. I mean, we can run into. Additional steps we have to take with them that could push it another year. But it's, right now I'm on, it's almost. It's hard for us to get something approved in six months. It's more like a year, but we're. We, half of the work has already been done on this because this was a previous project that got almost to the submission phase. So it's close, but. We can. I'd just like to move it forward if I can have support from the town.
So who, maybe this is a question to Mike Maury as well as Mike Mon. Who could declare? That it's henceforth illegal to roadside park between the Wildcat entry and and the.
Forest Service could and. UDOT could. But UDOT has taken the position with Alta and Snowbird, they will not close any roadside. Roadside parking unless it can be replaced somewhere else.
Okay.
I have a few other things, Ryan.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
Just, just a couple of little updates for you. You know, we're off to a great ski year here, snowfall wise. This is a 52 inch storm so far, still accumulating. 95 inch base. We had over 205 inches of snow. Last, last year total snowfall was 445, 445. So we might be. Half of the last year's snowfall by Christmas. We'll see. Um, the, you know. Icon, um, so skier visit wise, we opened six days earlier this season than last year. But if we compare our visitation levels to from the day we opened. Or last year, since that point forward, we're about flat. We're about the same as last year. So we're tracking about the same basis. We are seeing, you know, which is a little surprising to us given we don't have any real beginner terrain. Um, available. So the Icon Pass, we made a change and you have to have that premier pass to come to Alta. Um, it dramatically shifted the purchase of Icon passes in the Salt Lake Valley. Last year, um. It was, uh. 18 or 20, almost 20% of the passes bought in the Salt Lake Valley were that premier pass and this year it's 80%.
Oh.
So they, so they swapped. A lot of people just upgraded to buy the more expensive pass so they could continue to come to. To Alta. So when we run the numbers and look at the number quantity. It's about flat. We expect, so we expect will maybe be a little less, but maybe the same amount of people. Coming from, from Icon, but the good thing is, is. We're not, it might be the same amount of people and not an increase, which because Icon sold more passes again this year. Uh, they were, they were up again, but. So they're not all coming down. So hopefully we can, we can keep that balance there. Be, will work. The, um. Sunnyside lift, so. We're going to open Albion lift on Saturday. And opening our beginner terrain. Sunny side left continues to be plagued with. Missing parts and missing people to put the parts in place. We had electrician that got injured a week ago and he's. We had electrician that got injured a week ago and he's been off the job and we may get a replacement electrician tomorrow. And probably most of the work that's left is a lot of it's electrical and needs to be put into place. But we're we do not believe, but we know we won't have the Sunny Side Lift by Christmas. Most likely, we won't have it till the new, after the New Year. So we'll be operating with the Albion Lift as our only lift to access that beginner terrain starting Saturday. We also have reservations and parking reservations starting Friday. I am a little concerned. Last year, when we rolled out parking reservations and north side parking restrictions, it, we didn't, the south, the south side of the canyon was brown. It wasn't, we didn't have the snowpack we had. We didn't have all the backcountry skiers coming. And they've been coming in earnest, you know, since we've opened. And so it may be a little dicey for the first few weeks as we put that into play and, you know, try to you know, issue site to people. But, you know, we were working closely with Interstate with the the marshals, your marshals department. I think we're just about have all the parts and pieces in place and we'll see how it goes. But I do expect there may be a little bit more of a squabble this year when it starts to happen. That's all I have. I see that Mike Maury has his hand up, Bill.
Yeah, I think squabble is a good word, Mike. Just a quick question on the Icon Premier Pass. Is it subject to any of the blackout periods?
No, it's not. That that is a difference. We may, you know, it was kind of pleasant last year to the Christmas holidays because all of the base passes, which was most of them in Utah, weren't here. But all of the Icon passes are available to come to Utah or come during the Christmas holidays that are valid at Alton. Now, what we have seen is is locally the Icon visitation today with significantly more visitation at Solitude, Brighton and Snowbird of Icon visitors. I mean, we're lagging them all. So we are seeing some impact. So we don't know if those pass holders that since they only have seven days, are they just waiting to pick their special seven days to come to Alton or or what? But we're tracking about the same as last year. Icon right now. Any other questions?
Mike, this is probably a question I should have strolled into your office to ask, but since I'm not feeling tip top, you'll forgive me. Maybe it's anecdotal, but it just seems like there's a lot more pre-public skiing happening. Can you talk about that a little bit before the lifts are open at 9:00 AM? I'm hearing, I'm kind of biased. I know what I think, but I'm listening to other passengers as I ride up on the lift, maybe 20 chairs back from opening and it just just really seems like it's pretty spread out and pretty hard hit. Monday is the example that I'm thinking of.
We do have, Monday, we had quite a bit, a number of early birds out. The early bird product has continued to grow. We have some of that going on. We're trying to restrict our pre-public skiing to certain corridors on the mountain so that, you know, when they are out, if it's some employees or the lifties doing their, their pre-checks and coming back, that we're trying to corral that a little bit to preserve some of the particularly the powder scheme for other people. We're also trying to stagger our openings a little bit of powder areas so that they don't all open at the same time. So that as people arrive or, you know, like we don't open the backside and barroom and everything at the same time, but we try to try to maybe stagger them a little bit to spread out to give more people the opportunity to have some fresh tracks. But it is, we do recognize, you know, one of the one of the attractions that and one of the ways we retain some of our employees is that some of them do have an opportunity to to maybe get a run in before for opening day, opening for the public.
And I would never want to take that away from patrol or some of your employees. It just, it seems like it's maybe a little deeper than it's been in the past, but that might just be my imagination.
Thank you for your observation. It's something I'm continually trying to watch and that feedback will help me to curb it a little bit.
That staggered opening makes me think of the line that's ready to go out to the castle as soon as the rope drops. That extends pretty far over to the pass.
We've had some great skiing the last three days. It's been really good.
I was just gonna say, I don't know what those Iconers can be waiting for because it doesn't get better than the last three days.
We're just not telling them that.
Okay, any other questions, Mike? Thank you very much, Mike.
Thank you.
Let's move on to approval of the consent agenda and the meeting minutes, the treasurer's short and staff reports. Any inputs, thoughts, questions on that before we approve?
I move we approve the consent agenda.
I second that. Discussion? All in favor? Aye? Any pose? Consent agenda is approved. Okay, any questions regarding the department reports? I must say that I thought the department reports were quite thorough. And but really appreciate people figuring out how to fit that, fit such a comprehensive and understandable report into their schedule.
So, yes. I just wanted to highlight one thing. That we have we're offering extended hours at the post office this holiday season. This is something maybe we've toyed with in the past, but from tomorrow, December 15th through February 15th, the post office will be open from 9:00 AM until 2:00 PM. And what we'd like to ask of the community is just to maybe go to the post office a little bit later. The postal clerks oftentimes only, you know, we're at the whim of Sandy and the road and when the mail can get delivered. And so, you know, in times like this, the mail does arrive a little bit later and they just need a little bit more time to process that first class mail before you come and pick it up. So maybe go a little bit later than what you're normal, normally used to in the next couple of weeks here.
Are you going to double team the post office for any period?
We're not, no, the, the extended hours is kind of, we're gonna try and see if it works. The postal clerks feel that they can handle the volume. They just need, they just couldn't handle the volume with the 1:00 PM closure. That infringed upon them too much, but if they have more time, then they can certainly get through it and handle customers and whatnot at the same time. So that's why I'm asking folks to just go a little bit later to allow them to sort sort of that first class mail first.
Hey. See, anything else on the consent agenda or department reports? Not will go on to the mayor's report. So welcome to the last meeting of 2022. Please traditionally start off with something having to do with COVID. COVID is not clearly done with us yet. And so we're not done with it. It's very hard to, for me to interpret the trends if there are any, but well, as far as I'm concerned, this is, this is a safe way to operate. Jen, did you want to say something else?
I might be wrong here. I apologize. I got a first and a second, but I don't recall that you actually called the full vote of the council to approve the council. Am I, what, did you do that and I missed it? I'm sorry.
I thought we did.
You may, you may have. I, it may be an error on my part. I apologize.
I, I think we did.
You did? Okay.
Unanimous, yep.
Okay, thank you. Sorry about that.
I've attended a council of governments meeting that meets four times a year on November 17th and the thing that's distressing about this is how much of those other municipalities in this, in this council or in this county are I wouldn't say are, are, are challenged by the problem of the homeless, homeless population and how to accommodate their needs and how to put homeless shelters in place that work. I mean, we have some homeless people who are here in the summer. But it hasn't, it hasn't become the kind of overwhelming problem that it is for, for those in the valley. For us, it's a societal problem for sure. Okay, the UTA bus service. Boy, there's been lots of work on this issue and the as mentioned earlier, we did get 50K from UTA to fill a gap through this winter and engaged Utah Alter Shuttle to be basically to fill in the gap that pick up people that are dropped at Wildcat and take them to the road number, drop people at the lodges. Alter Rustler and Snowpine and then at Albion and then bring people down to Albion to get on the, on the bus. And, and Alter Shuttle is also serving them down the bypass road to the the Cliff Lodge. So this has been a stop back measure. It's not to me, it doesn't fill the whole gaps because the service has been cut. The capacity of service has been cut significantly, like 70% of the eliminated one hole route along the one that goes along Los Angeles Boulevard. And we're gonna have to start this winter with UTA on how we're gonna do, how we're gonna figure out how to do this in the future. And I think this is a serious long-term issue. Chris's staff report, I think lays this out rather well. There was a Little Cottonwood Canyon Road committee on December 6th and it had seemed to be surprisingly quick and short and everything seemed to be functioning well. But it did not address the issue that Mike Mon pointed out, which is Snowbird cars beat us to the punch going out of here. And that, we got, we got to figure out how to make that more equitable.
It's unbelievable. I was in the lot an hour and a half the other day on Monday to go shag my car. I waited till four o'clock to go shag my car and I kept thinking, what happens if I just abandon my car, like drive up the ramp and fucking walk up? It's just, it's unbelievable.
People do that. We actually had some people leave their cars in the Wildcat parking lot and they got towed. And it happens. They just have to go somewhere or they just stay the night somewhere.
Well, it's so frustrating because the, the line literally at one point I had my car turned off for more than an hour.
Wow.
Like it didn't move five feet in an hour. It was brutal.
Wow.
Serves me right for not going and getting an after skiing.
But
It's gotta be the, it wasn't until the, all the Snowbird people were gone that the, that the parking lot started empty out. The Gold Miners lot started emptying out.
Yeah, this is, this is.
Snowbird people were added down valid.
Having the main line closes and having snow on the road has always been our problem. And this is one reason why I was really bummed about the UDOT EIS is it doesn't talk about a lot of addressing our mainline closure problems. So I don't know.
Four o'clock this morning working on the main line, but it didn't, I, I might have come in before they opened it. Is it gonna be open tonight, do you know at least?
I, I don't know. It's, we're supposed to keep getting more snow, so I just don't know.
I haven't seen any.
I, I really like that traffic light idea. And I, I wish that we could consider that because it is really who's got the, the bigger Kahoonas sometimes when you're merging, you know? And at least if there was a light there, you know, it would encourage people to sort of merge on a more regular basis.
Yeah, or a live person if it came to it, you know, I mean, some of these extreme days, you just wonder why we can't why they can't have a off-duty marshal or something directing the traffic.
Roger, is that, is that something at the next road meeting? I know the next road meeting is a couple of weeks away and we could potentially have several of these evenings ahead of us with Christmas, but I know like a light or we talked, we used to pay somebody to help meter down by Snowbird.
Now let Mike speak to that.
John, the main line will not open today. The UDOT crews are hoping for potentially tomorrow. The forecasters are watching it closely. They want to have some more settling occur before they get the crews back in there and the maintenance crew is having some staffing issues.
And how about the issue of the merge problem, the, either the traffic light stir is or a cop?
We used to pay off-duty UPD officers. The town would find them, schedule them, pay them and get reimbursed from the resorts to go out and stand at the entry one area and blend traffic together. The concrete barrier that's been placed in the road now does the exact function of what our metering personnel used to do. You know, the, the problem of, you know, who lets each other in where the two lanes come together? That's existed for a long time. We've also asked for, you know, signaling solutions, physical barriers. You know, one of the things that you see frequently is down canyon traffic will jump into the left lane at entry one, even though they're coming from Alton in hopes of getting past another 20 cars. And, you know, it just, it exasperates the competition there at that merge point. But it, it is a problem. It, you know, it there are physical things that could be done to change the nature of the roadway, create, you know, less curves, more straightaways, which work better for traffic merging. We've pleaded for those things over the years. And as was mentioned, none of that has been presented in the current planning for the highway. But yeah, I say, let's, let's keep chipping away at it in the road meetings. And this is always unpopular when I say it, but one reality is that this is a math problem. You know, if you pour a bucket of marbles into a funnel, I can tell you which one is going to, you know, come out first and it's the one closest to the starting line.
Okay, that got through my, that's got partway through my mayor's report.
Thank you. Just with the traction law being in effect for partial days, like I saw that happen Monday and then my husband proposed for the 650 million price tag of more buses or a gondola. We could pay somebody a half a million dollars a year for 1,300 years to be checking traction law. So I feel like that's, that's contributing to getting cars on the road that just don't belong there or when we think a storm's not happening, it's not an easy fix for that, but I, but I also think that's, that's part of the problem here with people sliding out, accidents on the road, et cetera.
Yep, it definitely is. It definitely is. And according to Mike Mon, that the governor has resisted any imposition of any traction laws on, for instance, rental vehicles, but that's sure making a mess. And I don't know what the right arrow is to shoot into that problem, but I gotta, we gotta figure out something. Because you're right, the traction law is, the lack of traction is a big problem.
What's the initial time you have to be out of the Gold Miners parking lot?
Probably 1:00 AM.
It is midnight is when we start towing cars.
Cool, thank you.
What are you thinking, John?
That you'll have to come back and get your car by then?
I'm thinking I should be going to the Sitzmark and having a hot toddy or something.
Well, I, I didn't know if you were. Yeah.
Okay, let me continue here. Steve McAdash, who has been doing our a lot of, lot of work on our water system and sewer system for a long time, is retiring. We're gonna hire him back part-time, but we're moving to contract with the service area number three for operations of the, of the water and the sewer. For operations of the of the water and the sewer system. And uh, they they're the people who really know what the heck you're doing and it's the best option for. For. Our continuing um. Getting that service. Uh, we're up, we, the rates are up a little bit, but that's, I think it's uh well worth it. And it'll be, if it wasn't, it wasn't, I don't think that upgrade was in the the budget, we just amended, is that right? Jen, or was it, I don't remember. Were the new rates? Or. Uh, the water and sewer sewer service. Uh, in the amended budget or do they appear?
New rates, we don't have the rates.
He's saying, he's saying the adjustment for the wages.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Meeting with them. With Salt Lake County people, the wage cost is going up. That is, we did approve, that is part of the amended budget, I believe.
Okay, good.
Yes.
All right. On December seventh time. Was invited to um. Attend a meeting of the students of the Wausatch at the university and. I think it's great to have this younger generation who's invested in and supporting and familiar with Alta. And. You know, that's where the future is uh. And I think it's um. I I'd like to have more young people in that kind of frame of mind. And I. Chanced. To go down there in a snowstorm and took me two hours to get from the Uta home, which was a little bit of a. Endeavor, but. I made it. I met with Becky Hotsi this this a couple of weeks ago, uh, so many issues, there are so few resources. The opportunities to get more, but the the opportunity to get a more uh more summer ranger time up here came up. And I think that this is something that would be very worthwhile. In the past, we. Had a uh. A summer ranger for, I think on weekends, uh, we're trying to get that to be. Uh, more throughout the whole week because we're getting more visitors throughout the week. Uh, what I find interesting is that. They're basically calling on the town of Alta to share the cost of. Of this summer ranger. I view the fact that nearly all our land is belongs to the Forest Service. And the Forest Service. The United States government is relying on the town of Alta to. To subsidize their help and subsidize their management of that land is a bit odd, but seems to be that's. If that's what it takes, that's what it takes. And an astronomical note. One week from today is the winter solstice, at which the day length is nine hours and nine minutes. And that's from setup to sundown. Now, you can't really observe that unless you're on top of one of these high peaks like. Uh, Superior or Baldi or Snow um. Sugarloaf. And then you can see it come up across the horizon. So um. After next week, after next uh. This Thursday, the days will start getting longer. And they will get longer until the day length on. June twenty first is fourteen hours and fifty one minutes. And I hope by that time, it will have stopped snowing. Our next meeting. Is on January eleventh, two PM and. Just to pick up on my last note, the day will actually be longer that day. January twelfth, eleventh. All right. Next topic, um. End of mayor's report. Discussion of possible action adopted to the updated twenty twenty three capital projects plan. Do, uh, see, Chris, do you want to say anything about this or Jen, do you want to say anything about this?
I'll let Chris start.
Okay.
Uh, sure, um. So the capital projects committee met in November, um. You know, partially as part of the annual budget process schedule that Craig proposed and the budget committees uh been been operating on. Uh, partially in anticipation of this meeting with the council considering amended town of Alta budgets. Uh, and then partially just because, um, you know, as it. Um, so often happens, uh, you know, the building season had come to a close, perhaps somewhat prematurely this year in October. Uh, and it was good time to kind of take a step back and assess the status of. Projects we've completed and um adjust our assumptions about what projects it's feasible to complete. Before June thirtieth. I I did provide us kind of a a staff report as a cover sheet. Uh, to a proposed updated capital projects plan. Um, that highlights all the changes we discussed in our capital projects committee meeting. And uh. I'll just, I will um point out one, one thing that um I've heard from a few people. Uh, we could have done a better job of highlighting. Um, and that is uh the difference between. Um, the original approved capital projects budget for fiscal year twenty three. Uh, and the proposed updated fiscal year twenty three capital projects budget and that difference is. Three thousand three hundred and thirty two dollars. The the amount in the original approved capital projects budget was. Hundred twenty two thousand dollars for fiscal year twenty three. Uh, and the amount we're proposing to include in the amended budget for capital projects in fiscal year twenty three is one thousand. Twenty, one hundred twenty five thousand dollars. Uh, one hundred twenty five thousand three hundred and thirty two dollars. So that's one thing that I I wanted to highlight, um, I'm happy to talk through some of the other changes that I've highlighted in the staff report. Um, but maybe I'll let Jen jump in if she wants to add anything about her budget process or whatever else. Um, and then and then maybe open it up for council questions before I take time, um, you know, just sort of reading through a staff report.
I don't have much to say, I mean, I think the um. You've pretty much said most of it in your staff report, you know, I think we had at least three projects get pushed to twenty twenty four or beyond and then we added. Like the live scan and the AED units, so those are new, um. I don't, I don't really have much to add, um. I I do think we have been talking internally among staff about um the formatting and the presentation of this report and I. Part of me thinks that um. It's going to be. I can, I can envision something where you you have more um, more years out, so you can on one sheet. You've got each year identified and so it's a, I think capital projects planning in many other areas, um. Is like, you know, ten, fifteen, twenty years out. Um, and we, because this is fairly new for the town of Alta, we just started with short term planning, you know, um, but I think it's gonna be a benefit for us to start looking at these. Longer term strategies, um, and and I, I have some ideas that I've talked with Chris about, so I I think. I look forward to presenting kind of a new format to the town council for this in the future.
Craig, have any comment on that?
Nope.
I'll make a quick comment, um, you know, one, one. Thing with us doing more in the water fund. It's getting a little complex following along what's going on in the water fund, uh, CapEx, we've approved quite a few projects, actually, I think four, three or four. So I wonder if maybe it could be an ex. You know, the, the normal capital fund could be. Part of the workbook and then another tab in the workbook could be the CapEx plan for the water fund. So it'll all be in sort of the same document, you know what I mean? I know funds different money or maybe you just want to have another plan for the water fund, but the water fund could use a plan.
Yeah, thank you for, thank you for that comment, John, and um not to put Craig on the spot, but uh, but Craig, Craig made a similar comment, um, as we were planning for. Our capital projects committee meeting, um, just sort of about. Us beginning to think about. Capital, capital expenses and capital expense planning for the enterprise funds as well as for, you know, non-enterprise fund. Uh, assets. In the same. Kind of management. Um, headspace, you know, management efficient, there could be some management efficiency. And efficiency for like the reader or the consumer of our financial documents. If we could start to think about those, um, you know, three sort of. Uh, capital project outlooks, capital expense outlooks. In a more related fashion, and I I think there's a lot of. I think there's a lot of good we could do. By doing that, and I think there's a lot that we could learn from uh what you all have done with the water fund. In terms of thinking about, you know, what are the long term, how to project the. Um, long term operating expenses of our three buildings, for instance, how to project replacement costs for our buildings, it's just not something the town has ever done, but. I mean. We've got a number of examples of why we need to to start doing that, so I think that's, yeah, I appreciate you bringing that up, I think that's something we wanna. Uh, take up as we move into the fiscal year twenty four budget process, you know, next month and the month after. Um, yeah, it's certainly something I'm attuned to, so thanks.
Right, it looked like you wanted to say something.
Yeah, I was just gonna add a little bit, which is. Uh, I I was really happy with with Jen's, uh, you know, clerk's clerk's narrative today, it really simplified the communication of the information. John, you're raising a good point about the uh, the water fund, I think we're very close, I think, to having a a standard capital reports. Uh, uh, template that can work not just for the general fund, but then be rolled out to the water fund and 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 the sewer fund. And and the more we can standardize, the less we. What, you know, we, we reduce the cognitive load of digestion, but sort of one thing at a time, so we're working on the general fund right now. Soon as we get that template done, then I think we can roll that out to the water fund and the sewer fund, and then everything will be just. Standardized and easier to understand.
Yeah, that would be great. Okay, any more discussion, uh?
You want to accept Chris's plan?
Yeah. Do we have to, does this require a resolution?
It's a roll call vote because it's got a liability.
So, uh.
We need a first and a second.
I seconded, I think John. So moved.
Yeah, uh, if not, I'll move it now.
A second now, thank you.
Second followed by a first, uh. That's any further discussion on this? In which case, let's have a move, let's have a roll call vote, I won't I?
So, do you want me to administer that?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead. No, go ahead.
Can I ask one technical question first? Are we, are we? Um, assigning the funds here, I know you want to consider it restricted, I. Which of the four, three or four categories of restricted are we doing here?
This is the capital projects plan, the funds are already restricted in this account, and so this is assigning the funds.
This is the signing of two.
For the projects.
Thanks.
Yep, so Mayor Burke.
Hi.
Uh, Councilmember Byrne. Councilmember Ansel.
Hi.
Councilmember Morgan.
Hi.
And Councilmember Davis.
Hi.
Hey, motion passes, resolution passes. Okay, next is discussion of possible action on resolution twenty twenty two dash R dash twenty to adopt December amendment for the twenty twenty three budgets. Which is essentially. Which was. Discussed. In the previous budget meeting. Any further discussion of this?
Can I just make a quick comment that um. Based on the recommendation that was coming out of the budget committee. That we have adjusted two numbers, I can share. My screen, I've made those adjustments. Um, because this what, these aren't the documents that are posted, um. One adjustment that has been made is, let's see, they're both on page three. Um, the first um adjustment is to was to remove the the ten thousand dollars that was proposed. For mayor's discretion here, you can see that's now zero. And what that, this is a expense account and then the corresponding revenue account that I've adjusted here is the use of the unreserved fund balance. This went from seventy five thousand down to sixty five here. So this is the document I'm hoping that you'll um be discussing um in particular, um. And then I guess, um, one other comment, I just, we're, somebody had asked a question a minute ago about. Resolutions for the water fund and the increases to the water fund. Um, the increase that we have proposed for the contract with the service area to start in. January, let's see here, um. So I increased. This fifty one forty three ten. From thirty three thousand up to thirty nine thousand. This does not automatically result in any rate change for the consumer. But this is a line item that does go into consideration of how rates should be charged, so and I. Rates will not cha- change unless the council asks us to go back and recalculate that and propose a resolution to change rates, which we can do. Um, maybe for this amount of money, we just want to wait until. July. And do a change um then, but that is an option if the council would like to, um, because it is. Within the calculation to recoup these costs for the expense of the, of servicing water.
I, my two cents would be to not adjust this year's rates, but to consider this at when we set next year's rates. That seem right to you, Jen?
I think that's fine, um, hopefully, you know, with water, with overage rates and stuff like that, we can probably make this up.
Yep.
Okay, any other discussion on uh? Adopting the December amendments, the fiscal twenty twenty three budget. If not, let's, um, I move that we adopt that resolution.
A second.
Roll call, please, Jen.
Mayor Burke.
Hi.
Councilmember Byrne. Councilmember Ansel.
Hi.
Councilmember Morgan.
Hi.
And Councilmember Davis.
Hi.
Good. Okay, discussion of possible action for resolution twenty twenty two dash R dash twenty one policy about holding electronic meetings. And um. Cameron, do you want to speak to this?
Sure, thank you, man. So in uh, the legislative session this year, because of the. The in the proliferation of electronic meetings, the state legislature altered. The conditions when we can have a a remote or electronic meeting. And then they added some requirements on what we have to do in order to hold the electronic meetings, and so that's what this resolution is accomplishing, is simply setting. The rules that are required by the state statute. And there's a little bit of uh, a time pressure on this. And uh, that time pressure is probably my uh responsibility. I didn't notice these until November, uh, and they are effective as of uh electronic meetings in January of twenty twenty three. The changes are pretty minor, we just have to designate how and when a council member will be counted as present. How we uh determine a quorum. And how somebody that is viewing remote will will vote and how we'll recognize that vote, so for example. If somebody were to call in on a phone line. And we couldn't necessarily identify them visually or by their voice, we have to have some method to identify that the person that is actually voting remotely is the person that has the authority to vote. So that's just an example of why these procedures are required. And then it requires us to have uh for staff to designate an anchor location. Uh, as long as there's not a health or safety issue. And so, that's, that's what the resolution accomplishes, I'm happy to answer questions if you have any.
Any questions of Cameron?
Well, I would only note that it went a little bit further than the statute, I thought, in terms of having to provide. I mean, the language in this that's a little. Uncomfortable is a four point one. Where if we have an electronic meeting, there are some circumstance where we'd actually have to provide a location for the public to view the electronic meeting and the equipment and. And it's, I noticed we're a little different than the statute was there. I just am pointing out that we're, we're really all in on, we have to keep those mayor. Safety, uh, declarations going, determinations going, because otherwise we'll fall out of the safe harbor. And we'll have to provide a space like in the community center where people could go to watch the meeting. That, that just seems like something we should try to avoid.
Correct, so if there, if there was no health or safety, uh, determination made. And we're just simply holding a hybrid meeting, you know, because it's, it's more convenient and more allows more people to attend. We would have to designate one physical location. And so. That's what, that is what the statute requires, and so we're trying to meet that obligation, but for the foreseeable future, the health and safety determination. Um, is, is going to withstand scrutiny and, and will allow us to avoid that.
Okay, any further discussions on this resolution? All right, then I. Move that we adopt resolution twenty twenty-two dash R dash twenty-one, policy regarding holding electronic meetings.
Seconded.
Seconded by Jared. Okay. Other discussion? In that case, let's call. You want to roll call it?
Uh, it's a resolution, so it is required now. Um, Mayor Burke.
Hi.
Councilmember Byrne. Councilmember Ansel.
Hi.
Councilmember Morgan.
Hi.
And Councilmember Davis.
Hi.
Resolution passes. Now, the next one has to do with discussion and possible adoption of ordinance. Twenty twenty-two dash O dash seven planning commission term update. Excuse me, um. This came up because. There are three. There are three planning commissioners whose term is expiring. On the first of January. And, um. That was not intended, the, that was just kind of an act of historical accident. Uh, what we'd like to do is to have the. The terms, uh, staggered so that there's five council members and there's five years, and so. We had a, a term expiring every year, that would be a lot better than having three people. Drop on or drop off or be reappointed for another five-year term. And the other issue had to do with some ambiguity and exactly. Uh, when, um, council, uh. Planning Commission members were appointed. Uh, it, a year ago, it was a situation where there were three. Uh, incoming members of the town council. Carolyn, John, and me. And they, we would not take, um, office until. First of January. And there was an, there was an expiring member of the planning commission. And, uh, so the, my, the question to me is, should the outgoing administration appoint? A new planning commissioner, or should the incoming administration point, appoint a new planning commissioner? And because of this coincidence of the January first expiration of the term and the. Um. And, and the time that. Uh, council members are sworn in, it's kind of a. I would call it congestion. So. Two things that what I'd like to do, and one is to move the. Um, term of the, of the planning commissioners to expire. Uh, the, the resolution that. Uh, is on the table actually says September first. I'd like to move it to March first. And the ability to appoint commissioners to terms such that it staggers the, uh, the expiration date. So. With that, I'd like to open this discussion.
Seems like good thinking.
Okay.
I agree.
Right, Carolyn or Elise?
Great job, Roger. That is very forward-thinking.
I, I can't see, I can't see any reason that it wouldn't work, so, yeah.
Okay, all right, but it does.
I, I had one little question, because I'm just that guy, I guess. Two point four eleven voting. Um, that's a little bit weird, because what if not everybody attends, it me, it's, well, how come it doesn't just say a majority of the.
Attendees.
People in attendance as opposed to a fixed number.
Yeah, that's, that's a good question, and the reason that, uh, eleven and twelve are proposed to change on this is because they conflicted. And if we use a majority membership vote, you could actually have less than a quorum that would pass. Uh, a, a recommendation. And so what we're trying to do is simply say you have to have at least the, the membership of, I'm sorry, the affirmative vote of three members. Which gives you a quorum and also establishes when a recommendation will pass.
Yeah, even though that could end up being more than a simple majority.
Correct.
Yeah. Cool, thanks for explaining that.
Okay, any further discussion on this resolution on planning commission appointments? Uh. If not, I move that we adopt resolution twenty twenty-two dash R dash twenty-two planning commission appointments.
I, I hate to be that guy again, but. I think our new meeting rules. Require us to have it in writing before we approve it. And I think you're changing the date.
Ah, good point.
It's ordinance twenty-two zero seven that we're discussing, Roger. I think you just, your eyeballs went down to the next item, so when. I just, it's okay. Um, and Cameron, can we just edit that one item to be from September to March? Is that?
Yeah, so, so John's correct, if, if there is no resolution or ordinance, uh, produced in the notice for the meeting. We cannot take action, but if there is a draft published with a notice. The council members can make changes, and as long as we note those in, uh, the meeting. And publish the edited version, we can make those changes.
Okay, what does that mean, that we have to wait till the next meeting to act on this?
You're good to proceed.
Oh, wait, yeah, you clarified the means, the proposed to March first instead of September first.
Yeah.
Yeah, you just have, yeah, we just, I just, we just need to make it clear what we're voting on. And that is this with the date changed to March one, is what we're voting on.
Yep, okay. So I think I already moved to, to do that, somebody else wants to second, yeah, second, John. Further discussion? Let's take the roll.
So, just to be very clear, we are voting on ordinance twenty-two zero seven. Planning Commission term update with a amendment to change the date from, um, September to March. Mayor Burke.
Hi.
Councilmember Byrne.
Hi.
Councilmember Ansel.
Hi.
Councilmember Morgan.
Hi.
And Councilmember Davis.
Hi.
Thank you.
Good.
And if Roger, if I can just step in for one quick second to explain. The old ordinance had the planning commissioners' terms expire January first of twenty twenty-three, so this ordinance. As of the effective day is going to extend that expiration date of the three members. To March first, and then after March first, under this new ordinance language. The mayor with the advice and consent of the council can approve those, uh, appointments or reappointments.
Okay, and with that clarification. Is it appropriate to, uh, act on those appointments now, or shall we wait till, um? February?
We would have to have a resolution, and we didn't, because we didn't know for sure what the, the timeframe was going to be before we passed this language. And so we're gonna have to wait. Since we've extended the terms till March first, we can't actually appoint them until after March first.
Got it, so. Item, resolution twenty twenty-two dash R dash twenty-two planning commission appointments is moot, is that right?
Yeah.
All right, so that's off, off, that one, boy, that one went fast, uh. New business. Any new business by any of our?
I don't know if it's new business, it's more circling back around to that, what Mike was asking for, a letter of support from the town for the parking thing. I don't know what, I know in the past, Roger, when the town has done these letters, we don't vote on it, you just get, uh.
Yeah, a, a basically a sense of the, of the, uh.
Yeah, so I just wanted to see where we're at, because it sounds, I, I know the Forest Service and projects, the ski area, it takes time to get them through, especially with how understaffed the Forest Service is, so.
Right.
I didn't know, I just wanted to kind of bring it back up, because we don't see each other for another month.
Yeah, okay, um. Yeah, go ahead, John.
Did you want to, I don't want to preempt you, I, I would just say that I, I think we should do this. It was a little bit of a, there were a lot of externalities when the town didn't do this before. And really pushing out the Wildcat parking lot, that just makes tons of sense from eight different ways from Sunday. I was very encouraged to hear Mike say that he would be open to considering establishing some permanent base level of parking. For our cabin owners, and I'd encourage you to include some reference to that. I don't think you need to make it sort of like. Legal binding direct, but you know, this is a letter, you know, I, I think to reiterate that that's something we'd like. Um, or at least re- refer to that in the, uh, in the letter of support would be a good thing. Chris Colley, do you have a comment on that?
Uh, John, can you repeat your question?
Well, the basic idea, I guess, to me was, this is a permanent improvement for the ski area, one of which I happen to be in favor of. But this goes on forever. And yet, every year we find ourselves going back to the ski area, somewhat hat in hand. Securing parking for our cabin owners, and so, you know, pairing our support of this. Which is going to be pivotal for Mike being able to get it done with the Forest Service, seems like a good time. To ask if Mike would consider establishing. Sort of some floor level of parking that they're going to provide into the, into the future. Like it's, would actually be us getting something. Um, without it being fully but legally binding, just, you know, put in there.
Yeah, uh, uh, it could be, um. I mean, we sort of have that presently. Um, I don't know. I suppose we could have an agreement with a longer term or something.
Yeah, I mean, I think if he's open to it, why not, it'll, 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 I mean, I hear, I, I'm sure Roger hears it a lot. And, and probably Craig too, you know, about the cabin owners being concerned about the long-term parking future. He said he can work it in gracefully, but still get Mike's letter in a timely manner, I, I think it would make sense to do, and I just want to be on the record as saying that.
Well, we'll try to heartfully create a letter and bounce it off. You maybe wanted a time to see what you think.
Um, that, that sounds good, I, I like that you asked for that, John. And, but I'd, I'd want to see that much more firmly fleshed out. The only upper limit to humans in the canyon are parking. So in one fell stroke, giving ninety new spots, there's no way that there's ninety spots, uh, from the Wildcat lot. On the road up to the Alta Lodge. Could we use it? Sure, we can always use more parking, where does it end? So. I would, would want to really carefully look at those questions before throwing my support behind a letter of. Support from the town.
I think if you read his word document, his email, there, it's not just the roadside parking that the scary has lost over the years, we've also lost stuff to the UTA. Turning around and gold miners and some other things. And so it's more, the Forest Service, if you read the master plan, won't allow for parking expansion either way. The only way they're gonna go for this is if this is a straight-up trade in parking spots. So that's essentially what we're supporting is a, a trade in spots that they're gonna lose to what they're gonna, you know, they're gonna gain. And again, a forest plan, but this all has to go through the Forest Service, and so they aren't gonna allow parking expansion, it's not in their master plan, so. It's, you know, it's just a trade, and I do think we need to get cars off the road, people flipping U-turns in the middle of. Getting out of these red snake traffics are just causing even a worse problem. Then, and I also think that the, if we improve the top of the ramp and hopefully get UTA to commit more, I'm hoping that. It just, it helps us, we are just at the mercy of UTA, I feel like, up here. Even if the, you know, if UDOT had gone the other way with their EIS and had gone towards the UTA bus ser-expended bus services up the canyon, not a gondola. We would still be at the mercy of the UTA, I mean, we'd still be experiencing the same thing right now. So, I, I don't know, I, I, I think we should support this, again, the Forest Service is gonna have the ultimate say in whether or not this even works.
Um, before I call. Well said, Elise, it's really no net new spots.
Yeah.
And, and that's where I think if we can get a claim to some of them, we're. We're, just, it's just a win-win.
Uh, before I call on Craig. Mike, what is your number for the number of? Of parking spaces between the top of the ramp and DPH?
Which mic are you asking?
That, you, you mic.
Um, Chris, I know you've got the hard number in a document somewhere, but I think we counted it at thirty-seven or right around there.
Really, that's all?
Well, you know, you've got to understand that that is a dynamic space.
All right.
The number of cars that you can put in there, um, has a lot to do with, uh, how much snow is on the ground.
Mm-hmm, got it. Okay, Craig, do you want to say something?
Yeah, I, I do, uh, I just wanted to, uh. Emphasize John Byrne's comment about, you know, as a cabin owner that doesn't have winter parking. Uh, I'm perfectly comfortable, uh, being represented by the town of Alta. I'm a whole lot less comfortable leading that decision of whether I have parking up to Alta Ski Lips. That's why I think John's, you know, sort of soft request of. Starting to position to get a long-term commitment from, from the Alta Ski Lips, or, uh, you know, to, to. Accommodate our cabin owners that don't have, only have parking is, is a really good idea.
Um, and Mayor, if I can, um, amend my number statement, um. That number does not include the ad hoc spaces that happen around the, um, Peruvian Lodge. Um, which, you know, creates the same safety concerns, and so, you know, that does get the number up closer to. Um, the ninety, I think that the ski area is talking about. Um, and if I understood the scary's proposal correctly, that area would be put to bed, um, for roadside parking as well.
Got it. Okay. Um.
Motion to adjourn?
Wait a minute, are there, is there any other new business? In that case.
Mayor, um.
Yes.
There is, I don't know if you want, um, Mike Bond has had his hand raised and, um, this has been.
Oh, is Mike still with this?
Yes.
Oh, in that case.
Time to, if you want to hear from him and or any other member of the public.
Sure. And met whoever has their hand up.
All right, Mike should be joining us now.
Okay. Mike, you're on.
Oh, there, well, I almost forgot why I raised my hand, it's been.
I know what you mean.
I was just getting mentioned that, uh, you know, we are, the other issue that happened with the road. On Monday, uh, that impacted the town was the, while the early morning. Critical Employee Pass program worked well, the essential employee pass failed. Um, and all the lodges in the scary have struggled to get people to work by before eleven o'clock.
Wow.
They, because what happened is they, they queued up at the mouth and they couldn't, we couldn't get our employees up to the. The Y to even show their pass to let them queue up. Um, so, you know, with Mike Maury's help, we're going to meet with. UDOT and Sandy City and Unified to talk about that issue, but we could also talk a little bit about the down. Going down canyon issue, yes, but that, we're open to do that next week, actually, so. Just, that was, I was gonna throw that into that point. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else's hand up, Molly? All right. In that case, I would entertain a mission, a motion to adjourn ten minutes early. I would entertain a mission, a motion to adjourn ten minutes early.
Don't move.
Second.
We don't have to have a roll call in this, do we? All right, all in favor. All right.
Bye. Holidays.
Yes, happy holidays indeed. Thank you very much.